Mr. Bremen, we're on the air.
I hereby declare that the regular meeting of May 7, 2024 of the zoning Board of Adjustment is hereby called to order. Called to order and statement of compliance. Adequate notice of this, excuse me, excuse me. Adequate notice of this meeting slash hearing has been provided by posting a copy of the public meeting slash hearing dates on the municipal bulletin board and website, by sending a copy to the Echo Sentinel and Courier newspapers, and by filing a copy with the municipal clerk. Standard board procedures. Any hearing conducted by the board is a quasi judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to issues that are relevant to what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and decorum appropriate to judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Meeting cutoff. Announcement is made that, as a matter of procedure, it is the intention of the zoning Board of Adjustment not to continue any matter past 10:30 PM at any regular or special meeting slash hearing of the board unless a motion is passed by the members then present to extend the meeting slash hearing to a later specified cutoff time. Electronic devices. All in attendance are pleased to ask to mute cell phones or any electronic devices as to not interrupt the proceedings. Tom, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you.
Will call, please.
Yes, Mr. Aronio?
Here.
Ms. Bremen?
Here.
Mr. Giannakas is excused this evening. Mr. Flatley?
Here.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Here.
Mr. Watts?
Here.
Ms. Collins is excused this evening. Vice Chairman Grosskopf?
Here.
Chairman Gurek?
Here.
Chairman, we have a quorum.
Okay, so the next important business is we have to vote on carrying the minor site plan, block 13006, lot 14.01, zone 0, known as 331 Elm Street, application number 24-03Z, CPM Associates, AKA the uncommon thread. Applicant proposes to exempt ban the existing parking lot and create a new playground area. I understand that even though they were listed tonight, they're going to be, supposed to be carried to the 21st, if not beyond that, but we're gonna, for now, we're doing the 21st. Do I hear a motion to carry them to the 21st?
Mr. Chairman, if I could just real quick before the board votes on that, I'll just note, I did review the applicant's notice of this application. While the content, I found to be sufficient, and I also found it sufficient as to its publication.
Chris, microphone?
Oh, is it not on?
No, but you're, it's very hard to hear you.
Oh my god, wow. That is loud, okay. My apologies. So, as I was saying, I reviewed the applicant's notice of this application. Found it sufficient as to its content, however, it was not properly served, though it was published on time. I believe, per applicant's counsel, there are a few additional properties that need to be notified of these proceedings, so while further publication notice won't be required, and we also won't require them to re notify the people who've already received notice, they will have to, however, provide notice to the people that they didn't already notify who they will, and presumably they'll have that done by the board's next meeting, which I believe is May 21, 2024. So that is, that's the gist of the situation, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to explain that for everybody's edification.
Thank you. Okay, with that explanation, do I hear a motion to carry the minor site plan for Elm Street to May 21st?
So moved.
Have your second?
Second.
Will call?
All in.
No, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. All in, any opposed? Okay, it carries.
That will be 7:30 here at the municipal building, just so it's clear.
Right, okay, thank you. So they do need further notice in some cases?
Correct, just to, with respect to certain property owners, but otherwise, the publication was fine, and the people who already received notice, already received it, so they were surprised at tonight, and by virtue of the voice announcement, they're gonna be, they're therefore notified to come back in two weeks if they're really interested.
That's if they watch this through only tape, yes.
Exactly.
All right, now, the next one is bulk variances, block 11602, lot 9, zone R4, 339 Morris Street, application number 24-01Z, Brendan Conforti and Betty Lamas. Applicant proposes to construct a new single-family dwelling. Is the applicant here?
The applicant is here.
Okay. All right, you have the legal?
Yeah, I'll just point out for the record, Mr. Chairman, I deem both the content and timeliness of service of this application as notice to be sufficient to provide the board with jurisdiction over this case. The notice was sent to owners of properties within 200 feet of the subject property on April 26, 2024, and also published in the Echo Sentinel on April 25, 2024, both more than 10 days in advance of tonight's hearing, and as I said, that's what gives the board jurisdiction.
Okay, would you swear in our experts and their witnesses, please?
Sure.
And their experts, too? Swear in everybody.
Sure. Right, just, just Bill? As far as professionals go on your side?
Yes, as far as professionals, yes.
All right, great. Could you all please raise your right hand? Do you all swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
We do.
All right, great, thank you.
Okay. And for the record, Bill wasn't mic'd, but he did say, "I do." So, what do we have tonight?
So, good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, board professionals, Fredericks Alley Post Pollock, on behalf of the applicants, Brendan Conforti and Betty Yamos. This is regarding 339 Morris Street, block 11602, lot 9, located in your R4 zone. The applicants are seeking bulk variance approval from the board in order to replace their home, which sadly was destroyed by fire a couple years ago. They are replacing it with an extremely similar-sized home, essentially on the same footprint, albeit a foot over, so that we can eliminate what was a pre-existing side yard setback nonconformity. We are also reducing existing excess impervious coverage by 2%. We're taking it from approximately 42 down to 40. Still noncompliant, and we'll still need a variance for that, but we are improving the situation. Bulk variances that we're going to need, and these are essentially all preexisting, but since the home needs to be removed entirely, we revert back to needing variances for all the existing nonconformities. So specifically, we have a lot area of 10,000 square feet, where 20,000 square feet is required. We have a lot width of 50 feet, whereas 100 feet is required. We have front yard of 20 feet, where 50 is required. 19.9 is existing, so .1 foot, we're making it a little better. Coverage, as I indicated, presently, we have 42.2%. We're taking it down to 40.2, but it's still excessive, as 25 is all that's permitted in the zone. Again, though, bear in mind that this lot is only half of what it should be in terms of lot area, so your pervious coverage, if we had a fully conforming lot, would be, would be fine, actually. We have several accessory structures on the property, which do have bulk issues, and we're seeking variances after the fact, so to speak, to deal with those from a housekeeping's perspective. We have a garage side yard setback of 4.2 feet, where 10 is required. We have sheds with side yard setbacks of 5.1 and 3.9, again, 10 is required. And we have rear yard setbacks for the sheds of 2.6 and 2.0 feet, again, where 10 is required. So, we have quite a few variances that we're seeking numerically, but again, this is all preexisting situation, and just because we need to replace the home entirely. Two witnesses this evening. Brendan Conforti, the applicant, will introduce himself and tell us essentially what they're doing, and then Mr. Hallows will give you the details of the variances from the site. You have architectural plans in front of you. There are no variances that relate to the design of the home itself, so that's really just for your information. If you have general questions, Mr. Conforti can probably address those, but we won't have expert architectural testimony this evening, nor do I think there'd be any reason we would need it. Unless the board has questions for me. Mr. Conforti, you're gonna be on, so first, would you just confirm your name and mailing address?
Sure, my name is Brendan Conforti, mailing address 339 Morris Street in Sterling.
Yeah, speak up, because that mic has to pick you up.
Sure, Brendan Conforti, 339 Morris Street in Sterling.
Thank you.
And you and your wife own the property in question, is that correct?
Yes, we do.
And you've heard the tragedy that happened, when exactly did that happen?
July 7, 2022, already.
And you and your family, thankfully, not physically that evening, but you were residing in the home up until the fire, is that correct?
Yeah, luckily, we were on our last night of vacation in Wildwood, but we got the call from our neighbor.
And it's been determined that the house should be replaced, as opposed to trying to restore it, is that correct?
Yeah, foundation and entire home.
I'm going to show you, actually, I have a copy in front of you.
Sure.
The architectural plans that were submitted. And I just want you to confirm for the board that essentially, those are the plans that are going to be implemented and constructed on the site.
Yes, it's gonna be in the same footprint, just basically, a basic layout, just to replace our bedroom and the two children's bedrooms.
So it's a three-bedroom home?
Yeah.
And is that replacing a three-bedroom home?
Yeah. Basically, it's a three-bedroom, we had three bedrooms. I think it adds a half bath, or it adds a bathroom on the first floor. We had two bathrooms in the home prior.
And now it's two and a half?
Yeah, I believe it is, because my wife doesn't really want a tub downstairs, so it's more than likely gonna be a powder room, but...
That's what it shows on the plan.
Yeah, okay.
And just to be clear, the two sheds, the swimming pool, the garage, all of those were in existence on the site when you purchased the home, is that correct?
Yeah, when we bought it, everything, basically everything on the property was as-is, sheds and the whole pool area.
And when did you buy the property?
Let's see, we closed on July 2, 2019.
And you mentioned children, how many children do you have?
I have a son who's nine and a daughter who's four. We just got in before she was born in September of that year, and before the COVID scene, so we just got into town in time.
All right. I actually have no further questions for Mr. Conforti, Mr. Hallows is gonna do most of the heavy lifting.
Okay, so before we move on, does any board member have questions for the applicant?
I have one question.
Yes, go ahead.
I'm assuming that, other than the main structure, none of the other structures were damaged by the fire, right, correct?
Correct.
So they're all remaining as-is?
Yeah, the yard's narrow, but it's deep, so pretty much everything was luckily away.
Okay.
That's my other question. You mentioned there was damage to the foundation?
Not damage to the foundation as much as when the engineers looked at it, they deemed that, I guess, the Silvas owned the house originally, they owned the dry cleaners over by the truck store originally, so what we were told by the builder who originally looked at it, who was going to do a stick build that was far more involved, they said that at this point, with the house being that old, and the footings never really checked or properly attached, that he wouldn't be in good conscience to put a house on that, you know, especially...
So that's where I'm going, they're gonna excavate everything and put in a new footings foundation?
Correct.
While modern construction, okay.
Correct. We would have liked to have not have torn the whole thing to pieces, but, you know, whatever's the most safe approach.
Is this going to have a basement, or is it on a slab?
A basement.
You're not changing anything to do with the pool?
No.
Okay.
Might put a new liner in eventually, it's kind of worn out.
Talk into the mic.
Sorry. Might put a new liner in eventually, but no, nothing in the backyard, everything's gonna stay as it was.
We don't mind if you're gonna look at us, because you have to...
I know, kinda goin'.
Any other questions? Any questions from the audience concerning the testimony of this applicant? Hearing none?
I do have another question.
Oh, I'm gonna close it to the public. Close it to the public, okay.
I have another question for you. Currently, you have two sheds, do you know if they were previously granted any, or you just...
I'm not sure, really. No, I don't know, I just know that when we moved in, one had like lawn mowers and stuff, and the other one was just basically basic storage.
But your intent is to keep both of those sheds?
Yeah, I'd like to, because it keeps the, you know, lawn mowers and gas stuff away from the garage where the kids are.
What about the garage? What's gonna happen with that?
It's gonna remain, I still have my '71 Beetle from high school's in there, so, thank god, that didn't get torched, yeah. So that's, that's, now that we've been in, kinda displaced, my wife has gotten used to having her car in a garage, so that garage has to stay, by all means, if that's okay.
Is the garage structurally sound?
Yeah, yeah, the garage was unaffected, it's separate.
No, but I mean, it didn't have any structural problems with it preexisting?
No, no, it's fine. It's older, but it's, there's nothing wrong with it, yeah.
Okay, any other questions to the applicant? No?
Okay, next witness. Mr. Hallows, you're up.
I don't assume our experts have any questions for the applicant.
Just one, actually, one question I had was, what is the situation with the garden in the back, behind the pool?
It's just a basic garden with a chicken, chicken wire.
So is it, how high is the, because I was looking...
If I'm six foot, it's up to my nose or mouth, I'm 6'2", so...
Okay, so it's, it's really enclosed?
Yeah, I have to like bend down to get in there, they were probably very short, but it's open to the rain and everything, but it's just enclosed with chicken wire to keep the birds out.
At least you think you're keeping the animals out.
Most, most. We have a good enough bumper crop from the couple years that I've grown there that we can afford to feed the woodchucks and stuff.
Proceed.
Wait, Liz, is there any concern with keeping that? It's not, I was just confused in the photographs, because it seemed taller than I anticipated, and I was just trying to understand it.
So it's really not a structure, it's just a fenced-in area?
They just have like a basic box with chicken wire attached to the top.
Oh, okay.
There's really not much of a structure to it. And to be honest with you, I would like to keep the garden, obviously, but in another 10 or 15 years, as I have time and the kids get older, I'd like to redesign it a little bit better.
Okay.
But, you know, other than letting all the rain in, it doesn't stop any rainfall, it just gives a safe haven for the tomatoes to be in.
Actually, actually, just because Liz brought it up, it reminded me that I need to ask the photographs that were submitted. Fred, I'm assuming you took these?
Yeah, I took them personally shortly before the application was filed, they portray what I saw when I took them, and they still accurately portray the property.
I figured as much, Fred.
Yeah, we're second career going, isn't it?
I sincerely doubt that.
I'd heart it.
Yes, I think you're gonna have to, yeah. We should get at least two of those. And it's flashing red again.
Is it?
Yeah.
All right, then I gotta change the batteries already.
I just happened to see that.
Batteries.
I know you don't like to listen to lawyers, but what am I supposed to be?
I don't know. Good question. Do we have an extra mic we can put down there? The one that, some, that's on the dais, is it long enough cord, or...
I don't know.
No, I think you'll need that.
It's long enough, it's long enough, Jessica and Randall will be monitoring.
Don't give them yours, but is there one, an extra one there?
No, there's not an extra one.
Aw, crap.
You can take this one.
I don't know where we plug it in.
Oh, then you don't have one, then.
It's got one-foot cord, so...
Oh, that's no good, that's no good.
You can come stand here if you want.
We could share.
Yeah, but the problem is, where do we plug that one?
We're gonna plug it.
All right, do we have a plug up here?
I make a motion that we fix the microphones in this hearing.
I make a motion that you talk to your governing body about that.
I definitely will.
Has someone done that yet?
I do all the time.
I think it's in this year's budget. Jerry, it's in this year's budget.
Good.
Yeah, I have no control over it, I...
And they've got a new committee.
Let's get it out of the budget, into the room.
Into the room, yeah, please.
All right, go ahead.
All right, visually, so you...
Mr. Hallows, just even though you've been here a few times before...
Yes, yes. Are you still licensed and qualified?
I am.
Good, you're an expert.
So you get a visual of where this property is. It's on Morris Street, between Main and Passaic would be over, off the, off the drawing a little bit. It's a 50-foot by 100, by 200-foot deep, and it contains 10,000 square feet, so it's lot 9, block 11602. And just kind of give you an idea, for some reason, our adjoining property to the west, and the houses going towards Main Avenue are closer to Morris Street. When you go the other direction toward Passaic, those houses are back at the 50-foot setback. I don't know why that is, maybe those are a little bit older, or were built with different standards at that time, but it, it's just, that's the way they are, and we line up, streetscape-wise, this house lines up with what's there. I'm gonna go to sheet two.
Bill, these are the plans that we've submitted, correct?
That's correct. This is the sheet two of three of the drawings that you have, this is the existing conditions drawing. Which shows the footprint of the house that's going to be removed. The paved driveway is on the westerly side of the property. You've got the pool behind the house, you've got the garage at the end of the paved drive. To the rear of the property, you've got the garden and the two sheds. And just so that you get a feeling for, the property beyond us, for the most part, is a vacant lot, it's a green acres lot.
So there's no house on it?
There's no house, it is vacant, the house has been removed. There's been a few on, on that street that were the houses, have been removed. This is one on the north side, I think it's the only one on the north side, but it's right behind our property, our subject property.
How does the property drain as it exists?
It goes from north, from Morris Street, back to the south, towards Valley Road. We have a mild slope, basically, I would call it mild, gets a little bit, I won't say steep, but a little bit, a little bit more slope when you get back by the garden and the sheds, and then it drops off somewhat when you get back to that vacant lot, and the floodplain is not on our property, and we have no steep slopes, so we have no critical areas on the subject property, but beyond us, there are some critical areas.
Is it fair to say that the drainage goes out into the green acres zone?
Yeah, 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 and what's not really shown on here is there's a, a large stand of trees that are, I would say they're probably on the adjoining property, since the fence is, is only two and a half feet away from the property line, but when you're out there at the site, this is a stand of trees, and then the rest of the lot, it's, the vacant lot is lawn, and I have seen the township go in there occasionally and cut the grass when it gets a little bit higher. And Fred had indicated to you that there, pretty much everything is a variance here, our lot width, our lot area, the distance, the pool's supposed to be 20 feet off the property line, it's not 20 feet off the property line, I think the closest, it's 14 feet on one side and 17 on the other. The sheds are just a couple of feet off the property line themselves. And the house, right now, the closest part is at 8.3, we're just gonna move that, well, you'll see that, we'll move that house up a little bit. But the driveway, or main word is, what I have done...
Do you wanna mark that A1?
Which sheet is that colorized?
It is, it is sheet three of three. It's just colorized.
What's today's date?
5/7/24.
Thank you.
And you can see that the footprint of the house is a little bit different, but, but really, it's on the same location, we just put it back at 20 feet, just surveyor's thing to make it an even number. Somebody goes out there and stakes it out later on when the other house is removed, that makes life a little bit easier. We're gonna hold the 10-foot side yard setback where it was 8.3. Still have the driveway, will go down to the garage, the pool will remain where it is, the sheds will remain where they are, the garden will be, will not be removed. The other area, you see some lawn, but probably the reason why we have a little less impervious coverage is because the previous house had a side entrance on the house, and it came out, it had a little walkway out to the front, it had a walkway to the back, and there was a little area, maybe you call it a patio or something, at that area. There's one thing that I spoke to Brendan tonight about, that we'd probably look to make a change on this plan, it would be to, we tried to utilize some of the existing walk when we made the walkway from the, the door to the rear will be, will come out the rear of the building, and then it will, we were gonna use part of the existing walkway, I think really... I think really, common sense tells me that we should really just go straight. We'll move the gate over to, closer to the garage, and then just come straight out.
So that would reduce your coverage?
Slightly, yeah. And then we'll just make a little, uh, tie into the garage on the other side, I mean, the driveway on the other side.
Okay.
So we have cut-
So you're taking that angle, you're taking the corner off?
Yeah, it, you know, when you color it, it looks a little, it looks a little worse than it does when it's just black and, black lines over white, and I think that makes a lot more sense to come straight out.
Yeah.
And then the front will just be, you know, we'll utilize the same walkway. They'll have to do a little modification where the steps are, and, uh, I think we're, most likely the house will be same on the, the same, uh, elevation as what's out there right now.
Which is what?
Well, it's two twen-, uh, two-twenty-seven-point-three.
And how tall is the house?
Let me see if I have a number here.
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-nine point five.
Twenty-nine, say that in the mic, please.
Twenty-nine point five.
Thank you.
So do we need any kind of stormwater treatment, or everything's fine?
No, I, I think, well, what happens now with the house? The, um, yeah, a lot of the roof leaders come down to splash box. And then there's one that comes out of that side entrance that is piped somewhere. I cannot find where that goes. But the water, we're not gonna be changing any, uh, drainage patterns. The water's gonna go where it's been going for years, and that's to the south, towards Valley Road into that, for the most part, into that, uh, vacant lot, the green acres lot.
So that lot basically absorbs the water coming off your lot?
Yes. And then again, we have a, a good amount of, there is some land, I was, some landscaping along these property lines, and, um, and then there'd be lawn inside too. So the combination of what we have on site, and then the fact that we're really not gonna impact our neighbors to the south, I think is a good thing in this case.
What's beyond the vacant lot? What's beyond the vacant lot to the south?
Mercer Street.
Okay.
Have Mercer and then Valley.
Okay.
So you mentioned that the pool setback is not compliant either, so should we add that as a possible invariant?
Yes, yes.
Is he ready for questions?
If, I-
Anything further?
Uh, I just wanted to give you the numbers if you want those.
Sure, yes.
On, to the, to the actual pool, on the east side is fifteen-point-five. On the west side is fourteen-point-one.
And what it's supposed to be?
Twenty.
Twenty, okay. Alright, any, our experts, you have any questions of theirs?
I do not.
No?
I don't.
Okay. Board members, any questions for the, Mr. Hallows? Yes, go ahead.
So, Mr. Hallows, um, you mentioned that the current water situation is the water runs off to, uh, the township property to the south.
Correct.
Okay. That property to the south was purchased in our, in our own flood mitigation program. And that was done to, uh, to absorb, yeah, just what you're talking about, absorb water in flood events. Beyond that is Mercer Street. Those homes there flood terribly.
I'm aware.
Yeah, you're very aware of that, we all are. So, um, this house was originally constructed, what year?
Twenty-seven.
Yeah. Almost a hundred years ago, not many people cared about the flood situation. Now, we're all into the flood situation. So, it, you know, I'd like to hear more about mitigation on that property, keeping as much water as we can on that property. I know it's low lying, it's the two-twenty-seven elevation, it's one of the lowest parts in town, but when they originally built it, it was one story. Now we're building a bigger building, it's already, it was already challenged, the property, we understand that.
We're actually reducing the lot coverage.
I understand that, that's what I'm saying, but you're also asking for variances. So that's why I think it's proper for us as a board to ask for, uh, stormwater remediation on the property, rather than the plan is just to let it flow off. It's gonna, it's going to go somewhere.
My experience with sterling, the sterling proper, the downtown sterling, however you wanna put it, the soils aren't conducive to doing, uh, putting drywells in or, or anything like that. It's just gonna, you're gonna fill them up one time and that's gonna be it. It's a, it's a heavy clay soil in this area, so.
I understand that stuff too. Personally, I had to build a house, and I, I didn't even need a drywall. But I happened to be on the governing body at the time, and I didn't wanna go through the process of petitioning the board that I didn't need a drywall, which I did according to ordinance, but we had a jackhammer shell to put a drywall in. There's ways to do things. There's, there's other things, there's swells, there, you can build, um, you know, environmental plants, stuff like that, that can, that can absorb some water. There's something that can be done on the south end of that property beyond the pool. That's, that's in my opinion. I'd like to hear expert opinions on that, but I'd like to see if we can retain water there. See if its pits are great. Like you said, they might not be as effective, but they'll do something.
Well, they're not gonna, in this ca, in this instance, they're not gonna do anything, other than fill up one time, and then the water's gonna stay there.
Your testimony was, you don't even know where some of the water's going.
That's not my testimony. My testimony goes from north to south.
I thought there was a box or something.
No, there's a roof leader that comes down on the side of the house that's piped. And the only, it's, it's not gonna get piped uphill to Morris Street, it's gonna go down to the side.
Is that gonna be, uh, modified when the new house gets put in?
My inclination would be there would be splash blocks at the four corners of the house, cause that's really where the, um, roof leaders would come down.
My apologies, I misunderstood what you said. I thought you said earlier you didn't know where that was leading to.
Well, yeah, I, I don't, I couldn't point to where it actually discharges, but logic would tell me that it discharges somewhere in the backyard here.
Interior to the property.
Well, how about, how about this question? In your professional opinion, is there anything that can be done on this property that would address the concern that Mr. Aronio raised in terms of making sure that at least some of the water doesn't leave the property and go elsewhere?
I'd really have to give that some thought as to what, what could be done there. Maybe I could-
Can we ask our, our engineer for some hydroanalysis?
Yeah, well, let, let's get Joe's, uh-
The proposal in front of us reduces coverage.
Right.
Right? The house?
Diminimus.
But I, I, I think what, I think what we're concerned with is the fact that, how can we keep the water from just running to the south? And more of it on their property, and more of it to, to have a chance to absorb on their, uh, absorb on their property, if that's possible.
There's limited opportunity to absorb water into the soils on the property. And so, the water that absorbs into the soils on the property only elevates the water table regionally in the area. So it only exacerbates anybody else's basement issues locally.
So you're saying by having it run to the south is the best thing?
If it's that close to the floodplain, and they are reducing impervious coverage compared to existing, this proposal in front of us will impact neighbors less than the home prior to the fire.
But with the property to the south also-
Our code standard, our benchmark is the threshold of minor development, not major. And so with that, we look at the amount of disturbance, which there's no change in grading, no change in the patterns of who would be adversely impacted by a direct discharge. And then the reduction in pervious coverage is an overall reduction in the runoff from the property. While it be diminimus, uh, there's an existing condition on the site. It's well-established, as prior developed for, can we get some dates on, say, the garage, the pool? Those two improvements being added to the property, would you say they were there for at least ten years?
It was probably the seventies.
Okay. So we're talking pre our stormwater rules, pre our standards. Essentially, the existing development intensity of the property is stable and being reduced.
Okay.
So we, we can't, aside from rain barrels or other cistern devices for gray water reuse of, say, their garden, I would always endorse and promote a resident to do something like that, but it's gonna be a smaller quantity, it's not gonna be a tangible, uh, reduction to what runs off the property, but it's a positive way of using green infrastructure on the property in smaller rain events.
Is the property to the south that was vacated?
Yes.
Is, will that absorb any runoff?
I mean, it's, it was purchased, you said green acres? Is it green or blue?
Blue.
Blue acres?
Blue acres.
It's, it's specifically purchased-
For that purpose?
To, yeah, to eliminate impervious coverage in, and reduce the amount of runoff generated from it, and provide the floodplain storage.
Somewhat like a catch basin.
I mean, it's, it's the natural floodplain of, of the river, and, um, keeping development out of that regulated area.
Okay.
It's a program that was offered to residents
Yeah.
whose homes were persistently flooding.
Flooding, okay.
Thirteen homes did that.
I have a question for the applicant. So when, uh, yeah, speak up, so, uh, you might wanna get that mic, that would be good. Have you noticed, uh, when you were living on the property prior to the fire, in a, in a heavy rainstorm, did you make any observation of the water, uh, running off your property in what direction, or how much, or the quantity?
We actually didn't have the immense runoff that a lot of our neighbors did. I guess wherever our property is, it does have some slope to it, but it's kind of on the crown of the neighborhood, so, we, we really don't have anything accelerated. I would be in the backyard often with the pool in the summer, just tending to it normally, and I, you know, we, we actually were here, I think it was Isaiah's was the one where downtown flooded recently?
Ida.
I, one?
Ida.
Ida.
Ida? Yeah, okay. I knew it was one of the, one of the ones, yeah. So, no, I mean, since we've been there, um, my wife and I had actually been content with the fact that we didn't get flooded with water, and we didn't have a ton of it running, so.
Oh, so you didn't notice any, like, streams running from the north to the south on your property, or to that south and southern property?
No, I think generally because, uh, when they put the pool in, however long ago, they probably had to bring in, uh, soil to, to do the pool. And I guess because of the pool and the privacy factor, the entire yard is ringed with hedgerows and trees, and it's heavily planted, uh, with seasonal and perennials, so there's a lot of plant coverage on the property once spring bloom comes, so.
Are you saying that the roots of those plants absorb some of that water?
I would say that the amount of hedges, trumpet vine, plants, uh, established trees in the neighboring property, they probably cut down a tremendous amount of runoff. Now, when we first moved in, there was probably a hundred years' worth of blackberry bramble in the property to the left of ours. That was probably my biggest anger since we moved in, because that slowed down a tremendous amount of runoff, and it also provided, like, a privacy to the backyard that was unrivaled, so. No, even with all of the blackberry bramble, now I did notice, and, uh, it's like a racetrack on that next door property. So, a lot of that water, once they took that blackberry out, but in our property, no, we, we never saw any type of, uh, accelerated runoff. And in reality, the garden's there too, so I usually have the garden full of vegetables, so that probably has to mitigate some of the runoff too.
Okay, so that'll catch the water coming from the-
A lot of it, yeah.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
You're welcome.
With our, with our own engineer?
Sure. I just wanted him to testify the existing.
That's great. So continuing on that, we know that, uh, the difference in lot coverage has, has gone down, and that, that we all know is diminimus. So that's going to be mentioned, we understand that, but continuing down the line of o, other options that might be available. Rain gardens. Even though we're not gonna get a huge move, you know what I mean? We're gonna get something. And in my opinion, every opportunity should be, you know, seized to, uh, to do any, even little bits of mitigation. What, what is your professional opinion on a rain garden on the south side of this property? With swells or anything to, you know, to fill up a little bit of water?
Whoa, 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 what is that noise?
Microphone.
I know, which one?
I did that one.
Okay, go ahead.
I mean, I would, I would say- Even if we do something with, look, by the way, there's, there's more than four hundred feet of disturbance on the property, right? With the, with the, the foundation coming out?
Yeah.
Right, so isn't that our, our limitation on the ordinance? Isn't that the threshold?
Is fifteen hundred square feet of disturbance for increase of impervious surface? So we're under the total disturbance threshold?
Okay.
Not the impervious cover increase, cause we're on a decrease?
Okay. So it's not required by ordinance, but we can still, we can still look into and explore this and ask, Bill, for you, for you, what do you think about the-
There's only one trigger, one standard triggered by our minor development ordinance. And that is to detain and infiltrate four-inch runoff for the increase of impervious coverage. So if we take that negative value, call it zero, and multiply it out by four inches, we have a yield from our code of zero storage required. So by ordinance-
That's by law, but now we also have the opportunity as a board to mitigate stormwater runoff.
And I wouldn't-
And that's why I'm asking about rain gardens and other such things that have an environmental approach. You mentioned-
Fire damage dwelling remains on the property today.
Yes.
Prior to the application being filed, and today, present. And that dwelling, the garage, and the pool would date back to roughly the seventies all on the property?
Dwelling almost a hundred years ago, and the others were assuming at least to the seventies, right?
Prior existing, as far as zoning codes. Say the garage is before the seventies, right? So, we understand these to be existing non-conforming, lawfully existing structures, and impervious coverage.
To the best of our knowledge, that's accurate. We're seeking the variances anyway, to be safe.
Seeking the variance to codify the decrease, essentially.
Yeah.
It's an existing, I, I understand the concern.
Yeah, so I'm not asking for the legal requirement for it, I'm asking about the technical, you know, aspects of it. What, what can be done? And what would happen if a rain garden was put into that property?
I think the rain garden exists, it exists as the existing vegetable garden. It's not required of the applicant, and they can take out tomorrow.
Right, but there's also room beyond the vegetable garden.
Yeah, and there's a floodplain.
On another property.
I think the, the homes to the south down gradient are more substantially affected by regional development patterns that have influenced, say, government to increase the floodplain by three feet in the last year, to reflect the more appropriate limits of the floodplain.
I'm sorry to be so persistent, but what I, what I wanna ask you is a direct question, is-
I don't recommend any additional stormwater.
Would, would a rain garden have any sort of floodwater runoff mitigation?
No, no tangible, it'd be a diminimus benefit to any adjacent properties. Most notably to the Blue Acres conserve property directly in the south where the runoff goes to. I, I don't think any of the adjacent properties to the Blue Acres property there that may still be inhabited would see any tangible benefit from it.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board of their, uh, expert? Or our experts for that matter? Any questions from the public of their expert or our expert? Well, hearing none from the public, now close it. Any other testimony? That thing's blinking red again, that microphone.
It's dead.
It's dead, it's dead again, yeah.
Okay, let's go around you.
We have one phone with a microphone.
Just created a new committee for it.
Do you want this one?
No, that's alright, she'll change the batteries.
I feel like there should be. Need to think. Any of the ones that you just, like, clipped to your jacket?
Thank you. All right, good, yes.
So, we have no further witnesses. I, I think it's very clearly a, a C-one hardship situation that we're dealing with. We have a lot that is literally half the size of the required lot area, uh, and that affects just about everything. Uh, we have improved the situation with regard to the side yard setback by eliminating that deficiency that the present home has. Uh, albeit a small change, we have improved the, uh, impervious cover situation. We've discussed the drainage implications of that, uh, and essentially everything else is, is really housekeeping variances in order to, uh, document an existing condition, uh, that we wouldn't have, except for the fact that the existing home has to be raised entirely. As far as the negative criteria, from the neighborhood's perspective, from the town's perspective, there's some improvement and certainly nothing that, uh, is being created by what's being done that would be detrimental in any way. Uh, so we believe there are no negative criteria ramifications, uh, and the C-one positive, uh, criteria is there. Under C-two analysis, uh, might not be a huge benefit, but there's a benefit to making it compliant on the side yard setback. There's a benefit to the town of, albeit a small change, at least an improvement on the impervious coverage. Uh, since there is no detriment, that, those benefits outweigh it, so under both a C-one and a C-two, uh, these variances are appropriated, and we'd appreciate that they be granted, and we thank you for your hearing us.
Thank you.
Real, real quick, Mr. Chairman. Fred, uh, are you guys, would you guys be willing to stipulate to the conditions in, in Joe Voight's memo, May sixth, twenty twenty-four? I counted three, I didn't see any in Liz's memo, Mike, didn't think so.
Bill, we're okay on everything in Joe's memo?
Uh, what, what, three?
Extent of lot rating shall be limited to restoration of existing drainage patterns.
Yeah.
All proposed roof leaders for the new dwellings shall maintain same. Also drainage statement with proposed mitigation, subject to review and approval, board engineer will be required. And then, uh, soil erosion and sediment control measures shall be put in place prior to initiating. That sounds good?
They were test, yep, testified too, but you might as well stipulate.
Right, just want to be clear, yes.
And, uh, the change in the pattern of that walkway. They're gonna, they're gonna change that.
Okay, we'll make that a condition as well.
And we're gonna add the, uh, swimming pool setback, uh, variances.
Right.
As testified.
And you'll need a variance for the two sheds.
Yeah, I agree, you're mentioning.
Yeah, I'm only mentioning the pool specifically because that was not specifically not, uh, noticed for, we have the magic language, so we should be okay on that.
Right.
I just want to make sure the resolution ends up including it as well as the others.
Sure.
Thank you.
Let me just write this down.
Okay, Jessica, would you like, I'd like to start the deliberation.
Sure. So, thank you for your, you know, thoughtful presentation. I think that, you know, you have certainly met the C-one criteria. Um, and frankly, I think you meet the C-two criteria for the reasons that your lawyer laid out. You're essentially rebuilding the house that was already there. Um, and it'll be an improvement for the neighborhood, uh, beyond, you know, just the fact that you're replacing a, a burnt structure. I think that, you know, you're improving the property generally, and so that, for that reason, I'm in favor of the application.
Randall?
I'm in favor of it for the same exact reasons. Um, you know, I think it's a very thorough, um, application process, and really laid it out for us, and answered all the questions, I think, thoroughly. So, um, thank you for, for your time.
Jonathan?
Um, I agree, the, uh, exceptional, um, snariness and shallowness of this property and, and how this was, uh, set up prior to our, obviously, our current zoning regulations and, and the things that, uh, the other structures that are existing on your property. I, I don't feel that there, there is, uh, you know, I think that those all fall within the C-one. I think that the new, I, I, you know, obviously having a burnt out structure or a vacant structure on the property, uh, doesn't serve the neighborhood any good, and providing a new, uh, more modern looking, uh, dwelling that pretty much, you know, as it seems, will be essentially the same footprint, if not smaller than the current, uh, dwelling, and not seemingly, you know, be, uh, you know, overbearing on the neighbors, including the fact that I don't see any neighbors here who seem to have a problem with this. I wouldn't have a problem voting, uh, yes, in approving this, uh, application.
Thank you, Tom?
I noticed that the, uh, level of, uh, nonconformity with the new building will be less than with the old building, so that's a plus. And plus, the building is going to be an improvement to the neighborhood, so I'm in favor of it.
Jerry?
Um, for reasons that, uh, my colleagues have already stated, I'm in favor of it. I, although I express my disappointment, um, in not being able to at least have some floodwater or stormwater runoff mitigation, I still think it's, it's not going to be a detriment to the neighborhood, it's going to be an improvement, and I wish you luck in your new home.
Thank you. Tom?
If it weren't for the fire, you wouldn't be here, and so we apologize for that, on the part of nature, not our part. Glad that you're here, thank you for doing the right things. Uh, you have an undersized lot that is near a floodplain, you have some pre, pre-existing nonconformities that, again, like I said, if it weren't for the fire, you wouldn't be here to discuss. Uh, a new home is a wonderful thing, it'll be great for you, it'll be great for your family, and even for the neighbors in the town. So, uh, I will be very much in favor of this.
I share the sentiments of my colleagues. I noticed in this photograph here, the building to the right seems to be quite large, so you're, you're really not keeping out of the neighborhood character, because that, that house was probably modified at some point also. So, you're probably one of the smaller houses on the street. Uh, I, I think based on the, uh, testimony of the applicant's expert, the, our experts, uh, I think you've made, matched, you've met all the, uh, requirements for the variances, uh, there, I don't see any detriment. Um, based on the testimony of our ex, of our engineer, I think your water runoff problem is not a big, a big issue, because you have the vacant land behind you, plus I, I believe a lot of it is already absorbed onto your property with your garden and all the other shrubbery that you have around there. So I think you probably don't pose that much of a risk with, and, and it's going to be even less impervious coverage, and, uh, a little bit, uh, tighter, your property as far as that goes. So I would also be in favor of it. Uh, would you like to, uh, give us a little synopsis of your variance of the?
Right, I'll do my best, Mr. Do my best, Mr. Chairman. Okay, so I count eleven bulk variances being sought here. Let me know if I'm off base. Uh, the first is for the front yard setback for the proposed dwelling, fifty foot, uh, there's a fifty foot minimum, and applicant's proposing twenty. Next is lot coverage ratio, twenty-five percent is the maximum, applicant proposes forty point two percent. Lot area, uh, twenty thousand square feet is the minimum required, applicant proposes ten thousand. Uh, lot width, one hundred feet is the minimum, applicant proposes fifty. Uh, westerly side yard setback for the detached garage accessory structure, uh, ten feet is the minimum required, applicant proposes four point two. Westerly side yard setback for the larger shed on the property, uh, again, ten feet is the minimum required, applicant proposes five point one. Easterly side yard setback for the smaller shed, applicant proposes three point nine, where the minimum required is ten. Next is another, this one's a rear yard setback for the larger shed, ten feet is the minimum required, applicant proposes two point six feet. Next is the rear yard setback for the smaller shed, uh, ten feet is again the minimum, applicant proposes, uh, two point oh feet. Then ten and eleven relate to the pool, the first is for the easterly setback of the pool, applicant proposes fifteen point five feet on the east side, and then fourteen point one on the west side, and I believe the minimum required is twenty feet, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, great, and that's all I count. And then as far as conditions go, stipulated the three conditions in our board engineer Voight's memo dated May sixth, twenty twenty-four, and also a condition that the applicant would rework the existing walkway and move the gate to the pool area to the?
Coincide with that.
Yeah, to coincide with that, to provide a straight path from the rear of the proposed dwelling to that gate.
And we revised the plans this year.
Revised the plans accordingly.
I just had one more variance, which was, um, the setback from the, of the pool from the garage.
Oh, yes, this, the pool.
I'm not sure you, I heard that.
I don't, yeah, no, I didn't get that one.
Okay, so it, it, it's less than six feet.
Okay, from its structure.
Yeah, the, from between the, right.
Right, okay.
And sorry if I missed it, but don't we need, uh, variance for the two sheds?
Yes.
Generally?
Yes, we do.
We need that as well. I didn't get that one, no.
Okay.
For having two in gen, okay.
Right.
Yeah, variance for the second shed.
Yep.
First one doesn't need it, but then you need a variance for the setbacks of the sheds also.
Chris, it's all in line.
And the size of one of the sheds.
Yeah, no, no, that's.
Side yard, rear yard setbacks.
And there was a size for one of the sheds too, right? Well, one, no, one would, this, this, then one was compliant, even though noncompliant.
That's right.
I, I have a quick question, not to belabor things, I don't think it matters to anything, but the, the cover page of the application for development has an incorrect address, is that a problem? It says three ninety-nine, but it's three thirty-nine, correct?
It's three thirty-nine.
Okay.
It's not.
That's okay.
We, we know on the record, it's three thirty-nine. It is three thirty-nine.
Three thirty-nine.
Okay, so that was a typographical, so thank you for catching that.
Right, no. Um, and I, I'm sorry, what was the distance between the, the pool and the sh, and the garage?
Maybe, I, I, it's supposed to?
Could you scale that, please?
It's supposed to be six feet.
Six feet?
Um.
Minimum required is ten?
No, 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 the minimum was six.
A minimum of six.
And it's less than six.
And it's less than six.
Okay. Can we quantify that?
We are, he's checking.
Oh, he's doing, oh, I'm sorry. Is he hiding behind the?
He's hiding behind.
See him, okay, that's why. And while he's doing that, then the other one that I missed was two sheds, where only one's permitted.
Right.
And then we didn't need one for the size of the one shed, correct?
We do, we do, yes, yes.
Okay.
So we're now to fourteen variances?
Yes.
It's a record.
Please sit beyond.
It'll never be a record, because Starling Hotel was like forty-nine or something.
You haven't held the record yet.
Oh, you know what?
It does not need one?
No.
All right, uh, it, okay, sorry. So, um, between the pool and the garage is, um, is three point five feet? Is that, that's three point five between here and here?
Yes.
Okay. And then the, um, the swimming pool is, um, fifteen point five from the one? No, sorry, twelve point one from one side and fourteen point one from the other side.
Oh, it's twelve point one. So it's twelve one, not fifteen five?
Uh, yes, it's twelve point one.
Hold on, go ahead.
Yeah, well, cause, well, yeah, okay, so that's, all right, so seventeen, so he's getting, saying seventeen point one and fifteen point five.
And it needs what?
It needs to be twenty.
Twenty, okay, so that's a variance also.
You had them, I think the numbers were just, uh, a little bit different.
Okay, east side was fifteen point one?
It's fifteen point five.
Fifteen point five east.
And the west side?
Seventeen point one.
Seventeen point.
Where twenty is needed, okay.
Okay, that might have been me misreading a four from seven, because my handwriting started.
Is that one? Is that one?
Those two is, two sub.
Two sub it's us.
And then the oversized shed, how large is that structure? Sorry, oh, we gotta, we, we gotta nail it down.
Gotta get the handy, uh, little willer out.
This is why we sum it up to the end, that way we don't.
That's okay, this is why we do this, so we can get everything right.
Right.
I think you should, I think the setback should be to the concrete.
One twenty, okay.
And what is, and what's, uh, required, or what's?
One hundred, one hundred square feet.
All right.
All right, so that's all fourteen variances.
Okay.
That's it.
Yes, well, that's, because it is a small property.
Right.
That's mainly because they zoned it for something else.
Yeah, well, that's they continue throughout the years.
Yeah, well, no longer conforms. They would, they would have had to build half the houses on that street if it conforms.
We'd like to have another, you know, cap figure.
Okay, are we done with those?
Here's some property behind you.
We are done?
Um, everybody happy with those variances, guys?
Yes.
We're all on the same page, okay.
Good. Uh, can I hear a motion to approve this application?
So moved, second.
Okay, we'll call.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Grosskopf?
Yes.
Mr. Roneyo?
Yes.
Ms. Brennan?
Yes.
Ms. Flatley?
Yes.
Mr. Watts?
Yes.
Chairman Grek?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Congratulations, good luck with your new house.
Thank you all very much. Good luck with it.
Don't forget to pay your taxes.
Watch the lobby go up.
Have a good night, thank you. Take care.
Yeah, two sixteen. Oh, boy.
Seems like just two weeks ago.
Okay, let us know when you're ready for the second one.
We are ready.
Uh, I don't see the applicant sitting next to you.
On his way up.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, and Chris, uh, just to, just to note, since I was on vacation, I did not note which board members were absent for the previous hearing.
I, I was.
That's right, okay, so did you happen to watch the video for this? Okay.
You did not? You did not?
I did not, correct.
Okay. So you will not, so unfortunately, and I apologize, yes, I, so I forgot to remind you, so you will not be able to vote on this.
Oh, this is what? Everybody, guys, Jerry, everybody was present for the last time?
Not Tom.
Tom, did you wa, watch the tape?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, okay.
So, okay.
Did you, so, did you do, did you do a certification yet?
No, but I will get it for him, so.
But for the record, you swear that you watched the tape?
Yes, I watched.
Okay, so you just get him to sign that then. Unfortunately, uh, Randall, you have to, uh, be quiet on this one. Sorry.
So you can participate, you just can't vote, is that right?
Yeah, yeah, actually, yeah, you could participate, but you can't vote, right? Is that, yeah.
I can listen, can I listen?
Yeah, but you, you really can't vote, so.
You can't ask questions, right?
Yeah, no, you can ask questions. I was just teasing. All right, uh, so this is the continuation of the, uh, bulk variance carried from four sixteen twenty-four, block one three zero one zero, I'm sorry, one zero one. Lot forty-two, zone R four, two sixteen High Street, application number two four dash zero four Z, GSD Estates LLC, applicant proposes in addition to a single-family residence. The applicant present.
The applicant is present.
Right.
Look back.
Yes.
Two experts are present as well, and still under oath.
Real quick, before we start, Mr. Voight is not under oath, he wasn't here last time.
Right, that's right.
Conch a job, sneaky. Do you swear or affirm, sir, that you will, that in the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so hope you got?
I did.
All right, great, thank you.
All right, okay.
Right, and as, uh, Chairman Grek mentioned, this matter was carried from, uh, the April sixteenth, twenty twenty-four meeting. We carried it by voice announcement, at which, back on the sixteenth, I had mentioned that I found the notice to be sufficient, so no further notice was required, so just pointing that out for the record. So Fred, over to you, my apologies for taking up your time.
Okay, so, you know where we left off? Uh, what would you like to, uh, advise us of as any changes or?
Does the board want a recap of the variance relief, or we're good?
Yeah, give us a little, please, good recap.
Just for the record, it's two sixteen High Street, block thirteen one oh one, lot forty-two in your R four zone. Uh, we are, uh, proposing expansion of existing Cape Cod into a, uh, relatively modest, uh, two-story colonial. Uh, with now, uh, changes in the grading and so forth, it'll be discussed in tonight's testimony. Uh, the bulk variances that are required are for, uh, front yard setback to High Street, forty-one point nine or forty-one to the roof for the proposed covered porch, where forty-seven exists now and fifty's required. Pine Street front yard setback, uh, is not changing, but it's eight point seven feet where thirty is required. Bulk variance for a side yard setback, uh, to the left, as you're facing from High Street, uh, seven point three percent, which is the existing condition, ten feet is required. We have a variance for proposed detached garage being located within the Pine Street front yard setback. It is still setback further than the home, but it does not comply, uh, with the thirty-foot setback requirement. Uh, and we need an exception, oh, actually, we're fixing this, we did need an exception for parking, uh, needed two point one spaces. We now have, uh, three, uh, two in the par, in the driveway and one in the garage, so that exception actually disappears. We have three witnesses already under oath, uh, applicant's representative, Vape of Shaw, uh, Bill Hallows, Brian Johnson, our architect. So, all three are still under oath, I'm going to ask Brian to go first.
Did you mention that you, the, uh, the coverage for the rear deck that you added, the lot coverage?
Uh, yeah, I'll actually confirm that with Mr. Hallows, I think you're right, I think we do. Yeah, I'll actually confirm that with Mr. Hallows, I think you're right, I think we do go a little bit over coverage there. Correct, that is correct. Just as a reminder, at the first hearing, the neighbors to the left and a representative of the neighbor to the rear did voice concerns. Just to really boil it down, the biggest concern was just that they thought it seemed like too big a house for the neighborhood type of situation. We have, and Mr. Johnson testified to this, we have changed it somewhat. We've reduced the height of it, which is significant, we've taken out dormers up on the roof, which will change the appearance to what could be deemed to appear as like a 3 and, 2 and 1/2 story, now it's just straightforward 2-story. Mr. Johnson will go into some more detail, but we tried to address the neighbors' concerns as best as we could and still maintain a general concept of the house, which is to, as I said, change it from a Cape with insufficient second story to a full colonial that has a full 2-story. So, unless there's questions for me, I'd like Mr. Johnson to take over. Brian, you're still in good standing as an architect of the state of New Jersey?
Okay, you're still an expert.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I'm going to pass out some copies of the new engineering plans just before I forget.
Oh, that's a good idea.
Fred, I believe we received these more than 10 days in advance of tonight, correct?
These were not, no.
No? Oh, these, okay, so we'll mark them as an exhibit.
Are those, those are 18, those ones I gave you, Fred? Those were for 1893.
See, this is what I have.
Looking ahead. I was just looking ahead.
You're getting confused?
Sorry, Ron, I tried to make sure. Alright, Ron.
Yeah.
These were submitted, yes.
Okay, that's what I thought.
I believe the board has all the updated-
Right.
Mr. Johnson, before I make a bigger fool of myself, could you please take over?
Sure, thank you. So, we took back the feedback we got from both the neighbors and the board, and we tried to incorporate the feedback that we got as best as we could. A few changes that we've made, we'll start with the floor plans. In the basement, previously, we had a walkout basement going to what was the driveway. We are going to replace that door with a window, we're going to fill that with, and Mr. Hallows will speak to the grading plan, but, and then I'll show you in the elevation. We're going to fill that depression that was the driveway, essentially make the front yard more or less level there. That's pretty, other than that, the basement plan is pretty much the same. On the first floor, there was conversation about why the bath, there was a bathtub on the first floor rather than on the second. That was an existing condition, but after discussing it, we removed the tub, and in doing so, we were able to provide a longer kitchen counter on a relatively small kitchen, and then turn the existing bathroom, full bathroom on the first floor into a half bath, and then give that space to the kitchen for additional counter space. Towards the rear, a change that we made, we added a 12 by 12 deck. There was a conversation about, you know, when people are entertaining, or perhaps, you know, cooking, they might want to eat outside, and so the deck is now directly off the kitchen, which will also be the path that'll take you to the detached garage. On the second floor, a change that we made, previously, we had two bathrooms upstairs, that, one of the bathrooms has been removed, so we have a single bathroom, a single full bathroom upstairs with a double sink. And then, in addition, the laundry and the washer and dryer that were down in the basement, we moved them up to the second floor in a, to a laundry closet between bedrooms 2 and 3, and in the space where the second bathroom was, we have a walk-in closet for bedroom 1.
We went from 3 and 1/2 baths to 2 and 1/2?
It was, yes, so we went from, actually, 4 baths to 2 and 1/2.
For 4 to 2 and 1/2.
Yeah, yeah. Another concern that was raised was about the height of the house in relation to the neighborhood. We reduced the height of the ridge by 2 feet, and in the process of doing so, by changing the slope of the roof to a more shallow roof, we eliminated the dormers on the attic level, which could give the appearance of a third floor even though it was the attic. So, in doing so, also, in addition, this is approximately where the existing driveway is, so that will be filled in with new grade, and Mr. Hallows will speak to the grading plan on that. So, the, currently, the existing roof ridge of the existing house facing lot 39 on the left is 20 feet 10 inches. The new roof ridge would be 24 feet 10 inches, so it's 4 feet higher than the existing roof. The, for the addition facing the L shape heading towards the rear yard, that roof is actually a little bit lower than the main roof, and it ties into it, so it's probably approximately, I don't know, maybe about 6 inches lower than that. On the elevation, you can see we have the deck that we spoke of for outside area, and then that also ties into the walkway that will go to the detached garage. And so, what we've tried to do in terms of the elevation and feedback is to have a functional full story on the second floor, because the, right now, the half story is under a sloped roof, but then, to the greatest extent possible, we reduced the slope to a, I believe it's a 4 on, 4 on 12 slope. That's pretty much the narrowest slope you can get on a roof without having to worry about water starting to back up underneath the roof shingles. In terms of the architecture, I believe those are the main changes that were made.
Just for the record, where do we stand now with height? There was never a height requirement or height variance required, but where do we stand now with the regrading?
So, the height, so basically, we added approximately 4 feet to the ridge, to the roof, but we also, Mr. Hallows can speak to the exact fill, but we added more or less a very, very similar amount to the fill that's in here. So, in terms of the overall building height per ordinance, it's roughly the same, but in terms of the height of the, of the, of the house facing lot 39, it would be 24 feet 10 inches, and then, as the grade slopes away towards Pine Street, so it's going down that way, the ridge at the maximum height would be 26.8.
And we are possibly 2 feet lower from the perspective of the property next door.
Correct, yes, we're, than last time, we were 2 feet lower than last time, yes.
Nothing for Mr. Johnson at this time?
I don't see anything in here regarding the proposed garage.
The garage is the same drawing as last time, no change.
And what did we do for water abatement?
Mr. Hallows will speak to the, to the site plan on that.
Does our experts have any questions?
I do not.
Board members, questions for their architects?
I have, I have questions. So, it was mentioned by your attorney that there was some neighbors that had concerns over, maybe not the size of the building, but the look and feel of the building and the changing of the character of the neighborhood, given what, you talked about the size of the building on the small lot, and the lot that is on the corner, and all of those things that go into that. When you changed the design of the building, you took away the, the most noticeable thing is you took away the dormers, and you talk about the slope of the roof changing. With the back of the house that is, I'm sorry, the side of the house that is facing the neighbors that commented last time, what's changed in that regard? We talked about there was a jog in the construction, and one part was closer to their property than another part. What has changed in that?
So, this is the elevation facing lot 39. Previously, the last time that you saw it, the ridge was higher, it was about 2 feet higher, and then we had dormers that were, would have an additional volume here. In addition to that, we had the roof wraparound partially here and here aesthetically, which created an additional volume facing lot 39. Those have all been removed, we've, and what we've done is basically establish the minimum slope that's reasonable for water drainage for asphalt shingles.
In terms of the size of the structure, though, the height, let's call the height, the height to the peak of the roof above the window that's sort of in the middle of that facade there?
Yes.
What has changed in that regard?
That is now 24 foot 10, where previously, it was approximately 26.10.
And that's the biggest change, the noticeable change there?
And the additional facade treatments that were creating additional volume towards lot 39.
Okay, thank you. One more question. In your whole project, did you ever consider rotating the building so that the entrance is on Pine Street and then give you more room to spread out?
We're staying on the footprint of the existing building, so the, we're not changing the foundations or anything like that. To change the, you're talking about changing the entrance of the building towards Pine Street?
Which you could have more of a longer building and not as close to the-
So, the issue architecturally with that is, well, a couple of things. On the site plan, you'll see that the Pine Street elevation has a steeper slope, so it's, it would be a tough approach to get to the front of the house from Pine Street. Also, Pine Street's a narrower street, so if you were to visit the house, it would be difficult to, I don't even know if it's allowed to park on Pine Street. So, guests would be approaching from High Street, and then people that live there more than likely would be approaching from the detached garage.
Thank you.
Any other questions from board members?
Were you, were you able to retain any attic space with the way that you revised the roof line?
So, the attic space, the, with the collar ties, we probably have, to the ridge, to the underside of the ridge, we probably have a little under 4 feet, and the collar ties would be coming underneath that structurally, so you'd have to crawl around up there now, but basically, there, you could have some light storage, basically, that's about it.
Any other questions? Okay, no questions from our experts? Questions from the public of their expert? Yes, come on up and grab the mic, sorry, we only have one.
Sir, I'll remind you, questions only at this point, we'll do comments later on.
There was only one question, will we still have an opportunity to say something after we hear the site plan?
Yes.
Yes. Name and address for the-
Al Pepe, 222 High Street.
Thank you.
You have a question?
I do not.
Oh, okay.
It was my question, will I still have an opportunity?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, I must have understood, I thought you had a question. Any other, the other people have questions?
Any questions?
Okay, going once, going twice, closes to the public for questions. Everybody can still make comments. Alright, wait, hold on, one question, reopen.
Lori Rosmersky, 32 Pine Street, what is the amount of impervious coverage with the driveway, with the building, with the garage, with the deck?
The impervious coverage would be Mr. Hallows, but I assume-
Yes, Mr. Hallows will be able to speak to that at the site point.
Unfortunately, everybody has their niche of expertise, so, sorry.
If I didn't ask now?
No, you're right, no, no, well, he's going to testify to that, so you will get the, yeah.
I have nothing further for Mr. Johnson, so I'd like Mr. Hallows to step forward.
And you are still qualified from the last time.
Yes.
License is still in good standing, Mr. Hallows?
It is.
Okay, just checking, thank you.
From about a half hour ago.
Recently renewed. Hallows, would you please show us how the site has changed, or the proposed site has changed, and what have changed to the-
Wait, have we received this already, Mr. Hallows?
That's colored version.
This is a colored version of sheet 3.
You want to label the sheets that are colored versioned?
Yeah, it's just this one, you had the existing conditions.
Are we up to A2? Okay, label that one A2.
Yes.
3.
What is, will knock out, do you have, I think you had other ones too, do you want to knock them all out now as far as?
No, the other one is actually A1 underneath it.
Oh, we already marked that?
Yeah, we talked about that one.
Okay.
Quite a bit.
Oh, yeah.
And since the last meeting, I decided to make the drawing a 10-scale rather than 20 scales, it's a little bit larger, and I think everybody can probably see it a little bit better.
Thank you.
Again, this is sheet 3 of 4, it's the same drawing that you have, well, the thing that we have done is colorize it. And I'll start from High Street, the changes that we actually made to the drawing. We're going to remove the retaining walls that were on either side of the driveway. We're going to fill that area in, we're going to tie the contours into the property line to the west. Lot 39, we'll tie those in a little bit onto our property, not onto their property, but they'll, you know, it'll be seamless transition from lot 39 to our subject property, and then we'll connect into the contours on the other side of the house. We will add, the walkway that we have that came down to the driveway will be removed, we'll propose, we're proposing a new walkway that'll go out to High Street, that'll come off of the new, excuse me, porch that we have on the front of the house. We added the vinyl fencing, solid vinyl fencing that would enclose where the generator is and where the AC unit eventually will get located. Mr. Johnson had talked about the deck, 12 by 12 deck, which now fits off the back of the house, that's that lighter tan color, if you can, if everyone can see it. And we've widened the driveway so that we have 2 parking stalls in that. Next to, we have 1 in front of the garage door and then 1 adjacent to the garage door. And we rearranged that walkway so that it comes right off the deck, and will go to the garage where it could actually walk out to the parking area, or the man door that's on the side of the garage. And coverage numbers, 25 is allowed, existing is 27.3, and we're reduced to 26.8.
Okay, so you're reducing what's there already?
We're reducing what's there, and again, similar to the other application, we're removing the driveway in this instance, and then there was a walkway that went around the building.
So, that made up for the fact that you widened the other driveway?
We widened the other driveway, and, yeah, that was a number, we were under 20, we were just under 25, and then there was some confusion over the patio, that I wasn't aware there was going to be a patio there coming out the front door. We decided to take that completely away, put the grade across, this would be lawn, and probably some foundation plannings eventually someday. And then we have this lawn area on the, adjacent to the deck, for living space, outdoor.
So, the front of the house is going to look, for want of a better word, more normal, as opposed to having that?
Yeah, we won't have that garage under situation with the retaining walls on either side.
How's drainage going to work now?
And the other thing we're proposing, and I think that's something that we talked about, I know it was something we talked about at the last meeting, all the roof leader drains will be connected and tied into the inlet that's at the corner of High Street and Pine Street.
So, it's going to be, it's not going to be anywhere where any of those are going to be going onto the street, it's going to be going to that, to the stormwater drain?
That's correct, all the roof leaders will, from the garage and also the house, will go to that inlet.
What about runoff from the property itself?
Goes, it'll, won't change, it'll go the same way it does today, which is out towards High Street. You know, the high point is to the north or top of the drawing, and it goes down to High Street.
Okay.
Where do the, where do the roof leaders drain currently? They drain out to High Street, was that your testimony last time?
They're kind of in different locations.
They go out to the lawn?
Yeah, this one, this side of the house went out through the retaining wall and got out to High Street. There's were splash blocks over on the other side, and a splash block back in the corner of the house, which went nowhere other than to the lawn.
So, the splash blocks that were existing could have potentially gotten to Pine Street? Is the slope-
That's correct.
So, now, they're going to be piped so they don't go onto Pine Street?
Correct.
Mr. Hallows, and in your professional opinion, between the drainage going directly down to High Street and the, albeit minimal change in impervious coverage, is the overall drainage condition for the neighborhood better or worse?
I'd say it's better, in this case, that there was no direct flow rate to the inlet, which goes underground into the storm drainage system.
So, based on some testimony we heard from the, from the parties, from the audience, that they were, had a big concern about the water pooling or puddling on the end of Pine Street, do you think this would reduce that factor or at least not add to it?
I think the only thing that's going to get there is going to be the driveway. I think the only thing that's going to get there is going to be the driveway. And then, and I thought about that quite a bit, went out there and took a look at it, and I think what the problem you have, when you have these narrow roads, you really don't get a crown on the road very well. So, that the water normally would be up against the curb line, would flow towards the curb line and then down to the inlets on either side. But because of the difficulties of trying to pave something that narrow, there's no real crown on the road to do that. So, you know, what may get out there just kind of goes down. And heavy rainfalls, rainstorms, I think it would get more, most of it would get to the inlet. But I can see where some weeping or some snow melting would come out and get into the road, just because there isn't a crown.
But, in your opinion, what you have there is not going to exacerbate that?
No, I don't think so. I think this is a limited amount on the driveway, and then everything else is going to go into the inlet.
What's the slope of the driveway?
It's about 10%, from the property line out, and then a little flatter, so we have a little...
What about from north to south? Does it slant to go onto the property? From that back, yeah.
A lot of this property actually slopes towards Pine Street. It's the backyard that would actually come out towards...
No, that driveway, would some of the water go onto the backyard, toward the house?
No, no, would actually, if anything, it would go towards the lawn or the vegetated area between the right-of-way and the edge of pavement.
Is there any way to put a swale on the side of that property so that any water coming off that driveway would stay on the property? Is that a potential?
The only thing you could really, you could do here is put a trench drain to catch the water, but you're only going to catch a small amount because the good part of this driveway is in the right-of-way. So, it's really just the 17.1 feet that you could capture the water.
On the corner of the driveway, on the southern corner, on the edge of the property there, if you put a swale, so that any water coming off the driveway would stay on the side of the property instead of going on... It's all in the right-of-way, so you can't, okay.
It's really, really difficult.
Okay, that's why I'm asking, so, you know, it's not their property, okay.
Yeah, I think the effort to pipe and convey directly to the inlet for the...
Get closer to that mic.
The effort to pipe and convey directly to the inlet is removing majority of the runoff that's being generated on the site.
Which is the roof of the house, the roof of the garage?
Right, so we're looking at what's probably 45% of the driveway is on the property. The other 55% is in the right-of-way, draining out into the lawn belt of the right-of-way and into the road. And the existing vegetated cover also draining out towards the corner of High and Pine. We have inlets on both sides, and then with the absence of a crown, we also have the inlet on the far side of High Street on the south end.
So, in your opinion, what they're doing...
They should be able to accommodate anything coming down Pine Street to those inlets to capture any other runoff.
But in your opinion, is what they're doing going to exacerbate any issues of standing water at the end of Pine Street?
No, it's going to mitigate it.
It's going to mitigate it, okay.
By removing the bulk of impervious runoff directly into the catch basin.
Which is what's happening now with the splash blocks?
Right, right now, you're seeing it overland flow from the property into Pine and making its way to the catch basin.
Now it'll be directly...
They're directly doing that subsurface now.
Okay. Any other questions from our experts? Questions from our, yes.
I have a question.
Wait, let Tom go first. Go ahead, go ahead.
I thought you said Tom.
I'm sorry, no, I'm sorry, Jonathan.
Two questions. Number one, are you coming for variance, I noticed, are you looking for a maximum lot coverage variance now? Because you weren't before. Yeah. Slightly. Okay, because you were not before, though.
We weren't before, no, we were ready to bring in, for the build with the addition of the deck. Since your events, that counts as impervious.
And then for Mr. Hollis, the fill that you're putting into where the driveway is, I guess it's going to be sloped. So, at the max, you said it was four feet of, how much at the highest level of fill will that be? Like, up next to the house?
It would be four, maybe even a little four and a half.
Tapering down to the road?
Correct.
So, your prior plans, I believe, although there was some confusion, was to tear up the driveway and lay some grass or something sod there, but keep it at the same level. I think that was, there was some confusion what exactly we were doing, but either way...
I think we talked about leaving the walls up there, taking the pavement out, and then just having lawn, that's the same...
In your professional opinion, is the addition of however many cubic feet of, you know, fill dirt there, I assume, I don't know what the other, you know, the dirt that's currently there is, is that improve the retainage of water on the property as compared to what was there before? Not the driveway, but the original plan of doing, just ripping up the driveway and putting grass down?
I think it's very similar.
Okay, that doesn't change it too much?
No.
But it does help it for the driveway being there?
Oh, yes, yeah, because now we're going to have lawn, and most likely, eventually, they'll have some foundation plannings there.
Okay, that was my question.
Sorry, oh, sorry, can I just ask one question? Sorry, but the impervious coverage would still, that you're proposing, would still be less than what it is today?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, sorry.
Go ahead, Joey.
My question is, and it's for, I guess, both of the engineers, would it be best practices to have the water, as much as we can reasonably pipe, into some type of retention basin, some type of seepage pit on the property, and then with an overflow, going then into the municipal stormwater system? But first, keep as much on the property. We're already going to fill in four feet in front of the house. Seems like a good spot to put that, it's on the, you know, the lower end of the property. You have leaders going down there already. Doesn't seem like it's, you know, much of an added cost, but I think there's a lot of added benefit for there. What's your opinion on that? Would that be a better practice than just going right into the municipal water system, which is just going to push the water down to Valley Road eventually, anyway?
I guess, maybe, I misunderstood, but this is what we talked about at the last meeting, to pipe it into the inlet. I really, trying to think about it based on the other application, I know exactly that we've got the heavy clay here. My experience is, once you're on this side of the railroad tracks, some areas are shale and some areas aren't so good. It's similar to downtown Sterling, as I had said before.
Have there been any hard tests done, or whatever the required tests are to determine that?
No, there wasn't, wasn't anything done here.
So, we're just, based on prior experience, other similar properties, is that what you're basing your opinion on?
Yes.
Joe, is our engineer have any comment on that?
So...
Would it be beneficial to do something on the property and then have it gradually go into that storm drain?
This board has long had a practice...
Yeah, I know.
...to keep water on the subject property.
Yeah, as long as it's... That's what we're asking.
Just logistically, how would that work if we're going to the one corner, but proposing to put a...
And where would you put it in, would it be practical?
A dry well, or whatever.
Well, any BNP we put on a property is going to need to drain out within 72 hours. So, if we're going to use best management practices of the state, if we're going to do a subsurface infiltration basin, or just detention basin, depending on if we even had, you know, the ability to perk, we'd be detaining a volume that must release from that underground storage in 72 hours. That 72 hours timing would provide temporary relief of our municipal system downstream to any areas where it might be in a flooding condition before it reaches the outfall to the river. But it would, that volume would then be there within 72 hours, which would typically be, in any flooding conditions in our municipality, part of the continuation of the flooding. So, essentially, you could either take the water into the floodplain immediately, or you could take the water into the floodplain within 72 hours. The closer you are to the floodplain, the more it makes sense to get the water into the floodplain and allow the floodplain to release itself, so it's not further delayed in timing. I don't think we would see any tangible benefit to, say, a Valley Road section that we tie into before the outfall. You wouldn't tangibly increase the level of the flood from the volume releasing from this property, or the difference in the volume releasing from this property, from the 25% allowable coverage to the 26.8 that they're now asking for the variance on, which is a reduction from the 27.4.
I have a follow-up question when he's finished.
So, I'd say that the value engineering of it, the cost-benefit analysis of it is more theoretical than practical. It's more socially beneficial to show the use of these techniques than it would be to actually have an impact to our downstream network and flooding conditions down gradient.
You have follow-up?
Yeah, so, again, each individual property may not be impactful in the overall flood situation, but what about collectively, all of the properties that are developed throughout the whole town and throughout every other town? If you add up all of the water that's coming from all of them, and each opportunity that we have, when there's an application before a board anywhere, whether it's Long Hill or any other town, all of those applications were required to do some type of mitigation onsite, stormwater retention onsite, even if it is de minimis, collectively, how does that impact the entire flood situation in Long Hill and other towns that flood?
So, the requirement to the applicant is, again, to detain the difference, or detain the increase in runoff generated from the increase in impervious surface under the minor development standard? In this case, again, we were at a decrease from the prior existing, although it is, you know, acknowledging it's above the 25%.
So, we're into a legal question now, whether or not we have the authority to request onsite stormwater mitigation?
There is not a requirement of our code that they need to meet to hold detention onsite.
Right, but my understanding is...
But in the discussion of the variance, you may find it appropriate as a board to ask for mitigation. That mitigation, I would create a benchmark of 25% to the 26.8%. So, the 1.6%, whatever that translates to in square footage?
34 square feet.
About 34 square feet, that's 34 square feet over, let's call it, a 100-year storm, seven-inch to nine-inch intensity of rain. We're talking about less than a precast dry well volume. Kind of the factor, that's the factor of the volume that we'd be detaining.
So, maybe I should talk to our lawyer, because what I'm misunderstanding now is, that's like the technical, like, you're saying we should capture the increase in water, right? The increase in...
That's what our code requires.
Right, but my understanding, as a board member, we can require things that go beyond our code. Because we think that it's going to...
As long as it's a rational basis and...
Correct, as long as it's rational, and as long as it's, we think that, you know, for, in exchange for, you know, making the situation better, ameliorating any existing conditions that we think may be improved, which this property's dumping water into our municipal system. We have a flood problem in the town. That water's going to roll downhill and eventually flood. They're asking for things that are changing the character of the neighborhood. We have neighborhood complaints. So, if we want something to make the situation better, maybe one of, sometimes we ask for trees to be planted. So, we say, you know, this is, we're going to screen that property, because we know what you're doing is not within our ordinance, but we're going to make an exception for you, but we ask you to screen this off so the neighbors don't have to deal with looking at whatever is you're creating that's not appealing to them. So, the same, by the same way, we're asking for water mitigation. We're saying, this property currently dumps all of the water, and it runs down the street and into the lower lying properties that flood. Well, even if it's de minimis, even if we, like I said, one property is not going to change the world, but if we do this every time we have an application, which is, so I've been doing this on this board for more than 15 years, we can say, look, we think there's a problem here, we think there's a problem dumping water into the municipal stormwater system, because it's eventually going to get to the bottom, and somebody's going to be flooded by that.
But I think the question is, to your point, and as I understood how Joe answered it, is that, is it better to have a drain on the property, or is it better to put it into the municipal system right away? With the considerations that Joe laid out, and tell me if I'm wrong, but your opinion was that there is a benefit to allowing it to enter the municipal system immediately, because then the floodplain, you know, relieves itself naturally?
I misunderstood that, because I made a clarification, because I misunderstood that to be, the closer you are to the floodplain, which this house is pretty far from the floodplain, the closer you are, the more beneficial it is to put the water in sooner, put it right into the floodplain, that's what I understood from what you said before.
Quick rider on our promulgation of floodplain rules by the state of New Jersey. The reason that we have the recent inland flood protection rules, in my professional opinion, and this is going way outside the application, is that our state did not listen to the professional engineers in the state of New Jersey when they created the floodplain regulations previously, and they addressed quantity in peak flow reduction and never addressed volume, particularly in the floodplain. And so, you can't really destroy water, you could reuse it onsite, but it's either going to go back in the ground, or it's going to go down gradient. But by creating standards for development throughout a watershed, throughout a floodplain, that have the exact same requirements of timing and routing of development to release the water downstream, essentially what we've done is we created a regulation, a program of regulation, to continually top off the cup that is overflowing in the floodplain. So, every time the flood, the river starts to release flood storage down gradient somewhere else and out to the ocean, our timing of our basins in every development around the area and the region consistently release more water and continue to top off the floodplain. So, particularly with a small drop in the bucket of a minor development, I firmly believe it's better to release that water into the floodplain and allow it to release itself by gravity timing, downstream as fast as possible, rather than allow a minor relief and then top off the floodplain and continue that for 72 plus hours. As it relates to mitigating variance proofs, and perhaps I should step out of the way from our other two professionals, but it was asked, so I will answer. First, look at the variances in front of you, first look at the proofs from planning, planning proofs put in front of you, and if you feel that there is a balance of mitigation to those proofs, still to be provided by the application, for that affirmative variance to be provided, then that, as the example you made, to landscaping buffers, to alleviate a setback requirement, or some intensity of development that's asking for the request, that's that standard to provide that mitigation, and to justify it not being cost generative of the board to put on the applicant. So, when we get into the technical nature of stormwater management, I think it's a little bit finer of a hair to split on the cost generative nature of a stormwater improvement that may be minor in volume and minor in benefit relative to... minor in volume and minor in benefit relative to the cost-benefit ratio of that improvement.
Okay.
So it would not be my recommendation to add additional storage. I think the offset of that, if we were looking at roof leaders discharging directly to grade as you were at the prior application that I wasn't, at the prior hearing that I wasn't a part of, perhaps we'd be considering that that detention system as a way of then ma- holding the water and releasing it with direct overflow to to the streets, but by getting the water directly to our basin, if there's adequate storage to move small volumes and small storms, and it's under larger storms down gradient that we already are in a flooding condition, this application is not creating any downstream detriment to our infrastructure or the flooding conditions or the flood plane, not tangibly increasing the flood plane down, down gradient.
And it's benefiting that area in general, that specific area?
Specifically, the neighbors that have been noticed and have concerns about runoff, I believe are being-
Better suited?
Better, better suited and have the best mitigation for their situation. Because again, the more we put into the ground, the more that resur- that surfaces in groundwater mounding and potentially impacts one of the neighbors' basements or other foundational issues.
Or the street itself.
Or the street itself, or surcharging the street in, in area with height changing grades to another area.
Okay, thank you.
Just one, one more follow-up?
Yes.
Just about the collective storage of water on the properties. So one property isn't going to make a difference, but what about all of them in the, in the whole flood plane?
I think that's a discussion for us to have in a different forum relative to our township's endorsement of the Blue Acres program, and whether or not Blue Acres is a reasonable option for buyouts in flood areas, or if we want to look at other wide-scale rezoning and reconfiguring of those neighborhoods.
So, well, I agree with that, and, um, with all due respect, this is the first time I'm hearing on this board that stormwater management practices are, are not best to store, to have water first stored on a property.
I wouldn't put those words in my mouth, but you, same how you choose to.
Okay, so, well, maybe, maybe I didn't understand what you said, but I thought that you said that it's best to put the water directly to the municipal system.
I, I think what he said was on this particular, on this particular property-
Okay.
I, I don't believe we should be, I don't believe we should be looking at a widespread policy decision that may be cost generative to the applicant and create a position of potential, dare I say the word, starts with N A, ends in P L for a denial.
So the cost of putting in a system, maybe we're talking about the cost-benefit analysis, and I'm sorry to beat this to death, I'm done after this. So my understanding, it's, it's a very low-tech item, right? We're talking about a little bit of concrete, there's gonna be an excavator onsite and some stone. I mean, you buy those cylinders and you drop them into the hole and the pipes go there first. When you're doing a project this size, that's de minimis, I would say, I mean, it's a few thousand dollars.
No, I, I understand what you're saying, Jerry, but I, what I get our engineers saying is that the benefit for that minor overage of the coverage would not really have that great of a benefit to do that, as opposed to allowing it to just go right into the sto- into the stormstorm.
And what I'm hearing is that there might actually be a negative impact of that, so that's my big concern.
I'm hearing that as well.
Yeah, so, uh, let's move on.
I, I don't wanna-
Yeah.
I'm the last person who wants to beat this up, but I, I just wanted to tease something out that I think might maybe alleviate some of Mr. Rooney's concerns. The deck, right, twelve by twelve, that's what's causing the, the, the overage with the impervious coverage, correct?
No, except that we actually have a reduction now, so.
Right, well.
So that overage?
As opposed to the last, last, uh, time this application was presented, that's why, right, that's what I'm saying, right.
Proposed wood, wood deck with slats and gravel or, or soil underneath, so the water will run off and then infiltrate to those-
Yes, right.
Even though we consider it impervious, it does have some pervious nature.
Impervious, it's considered lot coverage.
Lot coverage, right.
So for your purpose of zoning intensity, bulk variance-
But it's not impervious.
If we were to remove that square footage from the twenty-six point,
Then we would comply, because that's what we-
We would comply under the twenty-five.
Or if that changed to a patio, it would be worse than the deck.
If that was a patio, it would be directly-
Right, my point in bringing that up, Mr. Rooney, was because the deck is treated as lot coverage, but with the slats, it'll still drain-
It's, it's beyond that, though, it's, it's the whole picture, it's, it's really, it's really flood mitigation, stormwater management, the whole big picture, more so than anything else, but thank you for that.
I appreciate that, and I think, I think the answer there is, is looking at our zoning and the characteristics of our zones and the applications that this board sees at our annual report, and we can opine on if we believe that certain zones need characteristic wholesale changes to their overall intensity, and if we wanna promote the consolidation of undersized lots.
One question. Uh, I believe I've heard here at this board before that if a deck with slats, if the, uh, depth between slats is wide enough, maybe it, width as opposed to depth, sorry, that it no longer is registered as impervious and then it's the same as any other lot?
They get a reduction, they get a, it's, if they get a fifty percent reduction in there.
Is that, and if we did that, if they did that here, if they did that here, would that bring us under what we have to worry about?
Mr. Hollis, you correct me if I'm wrong, I've never heard of that in this town, I can tell you that your neighbors in Northwest Burners Township, uh, flat out excludes, uh, open non-tungamy roof decks. As long as you have that gap, they don't include it in coverage.
I can vouch for that.
I, is this a, is this a deck that's gonna have slats, or is it gonna have spaces?
Where I would, I would align that to is our shed, our accessory structure code one thirty-four point four, I wanna say it is. If a shed is constructed on a particular base of gravel, the ability to drain does not count against lot coverage. So it's very comparable to
A deck.
A deck that is going to drain off and then infiltrate to the soils.
All right, it, it is in our ordinance right now, so just take a look, okay? So it, it's on, um, I can give you, it's one thirty-six point two, uh, E, and at E, F, and G.
And what does it say?
Basically, if a deck is not covered, is eligible for fifty percent reduction in lot coverage, provided it meets the following, and then, um, you'll just have to take a look, or, Mr. Hollis, take a look.
So do you stipulate that it would meet that? Can you stipulate that, that? Mrs. Ellie?
Yeah, it's, yes, it's going to be a slotted deck.
Right, but I mean, would it, okay, do whatever that requires.
So you'll, you'll be, you'll be in conformance with section one, whatever I just said, one thirty-six point two.
I don't think it's gonna, because we- It gets us closer, we still would have a walkway technically if we didn't have a deck.
But we're, we're getting closer.
It's gonna get us close, yes.
And we're allowing that water on the deck to seep into the ground, which is the, the whole point here.
And if your walkway wasn't concrete and it was stepping stones, does that help us get even closer? No, I'm serious, I am serious, I'm trying to help.
applications where that calculation was done.
I know that, but you also gotta see practicality, those things get on level and they, yeah, they're-
That's for the homeowner.
So with, with that condition being applicable, what would the proposed lot cover, it's lot coverage, right, yeah? Proposed lot coverage ratio go down to, it's twenty-six point as, as proposed.
You're gonna have to give me a minute.
Well, you, you, it looks like your deck is a hundred forty-four square feet, right? So it'd be seventy-two square feet reduction?
Yeah, we'd be down to seventy-two.
It's gonna be a couple of tenths of a percentage, I would think.
Yeah, well, and you're, you're over by ninety-nine, it looks like, so it would take you down from ninety-nine to twenty-seven. It'd be twenty-seven feet, square feet above.
Stepping stones.
Well, Mr. Chair, while he's doing that, can I, can I ask a question? Um, I know I just asked this question of Mr. Hollis, and then Mr. Hollis made a comment about the, just the property in the area, although it didn't do any, you know, testing of, but he did mention that, that most of this is hard clay and, and maybe shale or some hard to drain, and that's why I'd asked the question about the fill that they're putting into where the driveway is, and he said it was probably de minimis, and maybe you would agree, but I would think that the stuff they're putting in there is gonna be better draining dirt and, and fill than what they have on the property now. So it wouldn't, it wouldn't really retain much fur.
It's above whatever underlying-
So how much, like, do you usually have to add to, like, some, to height to actually create some advantage in draining?
Well, the, I mean, the, the advantage is the poor space, the forty percent void space in, like, a stone backfill, I mean, the soil is gonna be much less than that, but it's the available void space in the soil to hold some small amount of water, but that's really just perched groundwater essentially.
Yeah.
If you have, if you have, especially in topographic relief areas, you have shale, and it's not highly fractured with an opportunity for fissures that allows it to infiltrate through, and you're perching that on top of it before, in the existing condition, in shallow topsoils, and then you're putting, say, an eight-inch lift of topsoil over it, you get the void space of that at eight feet to hold the water, but the more water you put in there, the more that's gonna reflect out into the street, and it's gonna weep out of the hillside, and it's not gonna make it underneath the road.
But I guess the question is, 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 uh, we talk, we use the word de minimis constantly, is it better than this current situation that they have?
Having fill in the front yard?
Yeah, not the current situation with the driveway, but the current situation without a driveway.
That's coming down towards High Street to absorb into well-draining soils, because the fill's probably gonna be well-draining.
Okay, so you would say it is better than what they presented to us in the previous meeting, which you weren't at, but you know what they said.
Yeah, which would have been, you know, existed in suburban soils that have been consolidated over time by-
Okay, that's, that's just what I wanted to see if someone-
So what, what did we come up with?
Twenty-five point nine.
Oh, so we've gotten it down then?
Yeah.
Okay, to just a point nine over, that's good. Okay, so, well, that actually resulted in a good, uh, benefit. So, uh, just by redesigning the deck a little bit?
Correct.
Okay, good. Any other questions for Mr. Hollis? Any questions from the public of Mr. Hollis? No? Uh, any other witnesses? Okay, uh, would you like to give us an overview of what you're looking for?
I believe the members of the public might wanna speak before I do that.
Oh, well, yeah, but I, why don't you, why don't you say exactly, and then I'll let them comment?
So.
All right. This way they have a better idea.
Yeah, I mean, essentially I'd be repeating the same, uh, we have the same variances, uh, we now have a coverage variance that we didn't have before, albeit, um, going from twenty-five point nine as opposed to the required twenty-five. Uh, so it's, I won't say it's de minimis, but it's, it's not a big one, and it's certainly an improvement over twenty-seven point three that we have now. I think at the original application, uh, the neighbors expressed concerns about the massing, if you wanna say, of the appearance of the home from their perspective. Uh, I think by reducing the height by the two feet, and also from the front perspective of not having the dormers and having the, uh, more shallow pitched roof, uh, we've addressed that concern significantly. Uh, it, it is not, you know, an overly sized home, this is not a McMansion or anything like that, it is a colonial as opposed to a Cape or a ranch, uh, but it's not huge by any means. Um, we've addressed the drainage concerns significantly, as we've just discussed at length. Again, this is a lot that is less than half of what's required in lot area. Uh, so these variances reflect that fact, as far as I'm concerned, they're all justifiable both, both under the C-one for a hardship uh, and under a C-two. Uh, C-two primarily because we are, we're improving coverage, we're improving drainage patterns, but we're also upgrading the neighborhood in terms of the house. What you have now is a, a very aged Cape Cod that honestly does not satisfy the needs of modern families, you heard testimony at the first meeting about what the second floor consists of, it's, it's not full height. Uh, you're having adults having to bend over, walking through most of the rooms up there. Uh, so this is, uh, being converted into a more functional home. Uh, it's more appropriate for a modern family and would encourage, you know, family to move into the neighborhood, so it's an improvement uh, to the neighborhood as a whole. To the extent that there's any detriment, and we're certainly not suggesting there were, uh, we certainly would say that the benefits outweigh any detriment that might exist, uh, so under a C-two would be appropriate as well. Uh, and that's what we're looking at, we don't have any deviations and-
Thank you, I, I just wanted that so that the, is the, the audience understood it. Any comments by the public? Come on up, you would wanna give them that microphone. Deborah, could he, if he has to answer a question, could he use your mic? Yeah, Fred, you could use our mic if you need to talk, so that way we don't have to give it back and forth and back and forth.
There was no, so this is the comment period, sir, so I'm gonna need to-
Comment period.
I think I might have sworn in before, but I'll, I'll do it again just to be safe. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
And state your name again for the record.
Uh, Al Pepe, two-two-two High Street.
Thank you.
Lot thirty-nine. So, uh, I appreciate both the board and the applicant's, uh, consideration with the concerns that we had. Uh, this is much closer to what we had envisioned for the, for the neighborhood. Uh, one, one, uh, concern that I would like to, uh, express, now that we have a deck in the back here, would it be considered, or would be something that would be in consideration, to have a fence line in here? It wouldn't go all the way to the street, because I don't think that would look, you know, very good to the neighborhood, but maybe start it at the beginning of the house, go back and maybe cut off the corner.
You're talking about like a, a-
Privacy fence.
Privacy fence?
Yeah, something that, that's-
Something the, uh, applicant would consider?
Uh, we can certainly talk about that, would you prefer that as opposed to like an arborvitae hedgerow or something like that?
Well, we already have these for Cynthia's in here, so we're, we're almost looking for, and, and the reason I say that is because, um, within the last three weeks, there was, there, this generator here was running non-stop since nobody was in the house, right? So to have some sort of, I'm not gonna say a, a, a sound barrier like on two-eighty-seven, I'm talking about a regular-
Let me just, let me have Mr. Shaw just address that, because that, that was a specific incident and there was a reason, he can explain that really-
No, I, I understand, but I'm just saying that not only that, but then you're gonna have backyard activity, uh, those types of things, so that's what we're just considering, if we could consider a fence there.
Yeah, well, we have a fence around that, but, but, I, that's the noise, but he's, he's talking about more privacy issues.
Privacy fence.
Along the rear property line.
Yeah, not, not to go all the way, not, not to go all the way to High Street, but to stop it here.
You can't put it in the front yard anyway.
Right, it's a consideration.
It would have to be behind-
It's not the rear?
Oh, exactly, the side, so, not only that, my apologies, it looks like the rear, well, no, no, because the, the house faces High Street, so-
Faces this way, correct.
It's from behind us.
Oh, oh, okay. I could be wrong, but just-
Mr. Pepe, just so I understand what you're-
Go beyond the front building line.
No.
No, we don't wanna go in front, beyond the front of the building.
You went from the, basically on that, just show us something if you would.
From here, right, front, front corner of the house, back to the back of the lot, right?
And along the back?
And along back, if you could do that, I mean, that's not my property, so I can't speak to that, but this is my concern here.
I, I think your cohort, they would speak to that.
Probably.
How many feet of that would be, uh?
Exactly, exactly. Right, so I have a similar fence on the other side of my property, it goes to the front of my house, to the back, and then, and then along the back. So that's my concern, that's all.
And how, what are you talking, a five-foot fence?
Thirty feet high, something like that. Whatever the normal is, five, six-foot fence.
Six-foot, yeah, okay.
The applicant has concerns about the aesthetics of that, but if the board, uh, thinks that that would be a good idea, we're willing to do it.
Well, what do you mean by aesthetics?
Wanna speak to it?
Yeah, I, I want your concern about aesthetics.
Well, you're gonna put one fence-
Mr. Shaw, I believe, right?
Yeah, Mr. Shaw.
Your man?
He was under oath, yeah.
Yeah, I was, so you're gonna put one fence from the corner of the property down all the way to the garage, just keep in consideration, that garage is being roofed inside it, that's gonna be uniform with that house.
No, no, I understand that, but what's the aesthetic reason why you don't like the fence?
Well, you think about it, you're looking at the front of the house, you're just seeing one fence, it's just one fence, just going like this, right? It's not, normally when you have a fence, you're connecting it left, right, you're having a gate, it's in-
having a gate, it's enclosed, this and that.
Well, you could put a gate across the front of it, too.
Like I said, I don't mind putting it, but aesthetically, I would like you to take that into consideration to see how that looks, because now you're just putting one five-foot vinyl, think of a PVC vinyl fence just running straight down as a separate.
Anyone said that to be vinyl?
Yeah, well, wood or vinyl.
Whatever that is.
Actually, vinyl is more, actually, I think it's more aesthetic, because it lasts longer, it doesn't get nasty looking.
What he's saying is, it's going to look weird.
Yeah.
It's half a fence. It's half a fenced-in yard, because it can't be.
Not really.
It's a full yard.
But it's already screened on one side.
Right.
Yeah, not, not, not really. If you just look at my property, I have a fence on the left, and it goes up the side just like this, on the opposite side of the house, and then it turns into the back of the property, and it screens me from my neighbor, thus screening me from my neighbor.
And screening them, you.
From us, too, yeah, of course.
I just have, I just have one question. Would you take putting planted trees as an alternative?
He asked for a fence.
Why, he's just asking.
I'm just, I'm just asking the question if.
Yeah, I think we'd, I think we'd rather see a fence, to be honest with you.
All right, that's, that's fine.
Okay. I, what do the board members think of the fence? I mean, I have no issues for a fence.
Ultimately, it's up to you guys.
I have no issues with a fence. I don't think it's going to look weird. I, I think it probably would afford privacy to those people when they're on their deck.
I will defer to the applicant, but I would not make my vote conditional on the fence.
Okay.
I think that people can use their backyard regardless of whether there's a deck there or not, and that, you know, if someone moved into this house the way that it is, they could use the backyard. There's no, right? So I understand your concern, defer to, you know, others, but personally, for me, I would not make my vote conditional on the fence.
Brandon, what do you think?
I don't know.
You don't care one way or the other?
No.
I concur.
With her?
Yes, I do.
Jonathan?
I can see the benefit of it. I don't know that I would go as far as saying, yeah, my, my vote would be conditional on it, but I can definitely see a benefit for it.
Okay. Tom?
I think the fence is, is a plus to give the privacy to the both parties.
Jerry?
I'm in favor of the fence. I think it would screen the property. The neighbor's asking, he's been kind of generous with his view of the new application. He's accepting it. I think a fence is a small expense.
No, yeah, I'm not worried about the expense.
For goodwill, for the neighborhood, for everything. I think, you know, a six or seven, whatever foot-high fence is, is not going to change.
Compliant fence.
Yeah, compliant.
Whatever the number is.
Yeah.
A normal-sized fence, and then if you want to screen it from the applicant's side, you can plant your arborvitae there. We've done that. On this board, we've had fence and natural, natural barriers.
Oh, I know we have.
We've done both.
Yeah.
On the same application, for, for this reason.
Yeah.
Screens some noise, and the shrubbery also screens the aesthetics, so.
I don't have a problem with a fence either, and I might, I might, I would be in favor of putting a fence, only since the properties are so close to one another, that it might be a, a nice privacy issue.
So our question, and this might be better for Ms. Rosmiersky to answer, is whether we'd want it to go across any part of the back line as well, or just up between us and thirty-nine?
Well, I, go ahead.
Yes, across the back.
You need to be Mike.
I think she was sworn already, but I'll do it again.
Yeah, she was sworn already, but.
He was sworn out.
Do it again. Wait, wait till you're sworn in, and then you can identify yourself.
Still?
No, you only had questions.
Just going to double check. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Would you want a fence across the entire back?
Yes, yes, because it is so close here, we would just ask for a fence.
Along?
Like Albert, and right across.
Up to the right-of-way. It can't go beyond the right-of-way.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It can't go beyond the front building.
Yeah, it's right here.
Foundation of the building.
Right, okay. Without the foundation line of the garage?
Of the home.
Of the home, okay.
On the home's.
Which would almost be the foundation line of the garage.
Yeah, it's what, what's the difference? It's like ten feet.
No, no, talk about the back.
Right, but I'm saying that the house, if you're talking about the house, the house is only ten feet from the right-of-way.
Right, so you, that fence is only going to go up to the right-of-way?
Yeah.
Ten feet from, ten feet in from the right-of-way.
Right, ten feet in from the right-of-way, okay.
Right. Can fences be built on the property line, or is there a?
There's only.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
I mean, for practice, I mean.
We don't, we tell, we, we ask people not to avoid it.
Yeah, right.
As to not get into a dispute with the neighborhood.
Yeah, about six inches at least, and so that there's no question who owns.
General rule of thumb.
Right, because the garage is only going to be ten feet, ten feet from the property line.
Right, right.
So.
When you enter your car, it's half those fence.
It's going to be like right there.
Give it to me.
Yeah, it's not going to go along the driveway. It's only, right, it's not going to be up to the driveway, because that's, that's the right-of-way right there.
Well, no, this is seventeen feet, right? What's the right-of-way? Seventeen plus seventeen here for the garage, for the driveway.
Where would be?
Right, this one. So it's seventeen feet right-of-way, and here's the.
And then you have ten feet in.
No, it's seventeen feet into the.
Right.
So it'll be right here.
Yeah.
Okay. Right, so it would be like that. Right.
Right, okay, so understanding it would be there.
We have a, we have a proposal. What if we took it, sorry about the mic issue. What if we took it and ended it even with the front plane of the garage?
Right there, yes.
Right. So, so we don't have a fence kind of halfway along the driveway, and it just stops randomly?
It, it, there's, I'm not sure what, why can't it go to the street?
Because it gets in the front yard, then it's too high for a front yard.
Yeah, it's a front.
But then, then, then it can go down in height, and it's being, it, yeah.
Okay, so you can.
Oh, that's true, yeah.
Put it four feet, then.
Yes.
If it's high, right, higher, and then it just steps down.
It, it's a front yard setback, you're already in your front yard setback.
I mean, technically, you have two front yards. This is your front yard.
I mean, it's still going to, it's still going to end randomly, because we have so much of our, of that front yard in the right-of-way.
Yeah.
And we can't put it there.
I think what our planner's saying, I think that has a nice aesthetic appeal, it's whatever the, the height is, and then when it gets to that point, it steps down.
Yeah.
And how much, how much of a four-foot fence would you have? How, what's the distance?
The setback of the home.
But no, 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 it's the front yard setback.
From the front of the garage.
It's the front yard setback.
Seventeen feet.
What's the front yard setback?
Seventeen.
It would still end halfway in the middle of the driveway, right?
Right. But it would only be four feet there.
No, wait, no, so you can.
Yeah.
I think what she's saying.
It, it would be, it would be four feet for most of that. It would be only four feet high, unless they ask for a variance.
What do you mean?
Because it, you can't have anything close to four feet.
Yeah, well, yeah, you can't.
That's above four feet in height for a fence.
Yeah, they wouldn't be able to build it right-of-way.
Property's not deep enough.
They could ask for a variance.
Yeah, they can get a variance. I mean, they just, but they'd have to ask. Yeah.
You can't get a variance with the height. We can't get a variance with the right-of-way.
Not in the right-of-way, but you can have it in the front yard, and there's nothing against having a fence in the front yard. People keep saying, I know, but people keep saying that, and that's incorrect.
But, but the, but as the.
You're given variances for a front setback, you're given for another's front setback, you're given for a side yard, detached garage, three parking spaces, you're getting all those variances, why can't I have a variance for a fence?
Parking.
For them to give them a thing.
Just, the, the point is, the variance would be, we're not even to the point of objecting to it, we're just saying the variance would only be to allow it to be six feet.
As opposed to four.
Or the way to the right-of-way, but you can't get a variance. They, the board cannot even give us a variance to take it into the right-of-way.
Oh, no, I understand that. Oh, no, no, I understand that.
Either way.
I, I have a question, if I can bring up, if you're putting a fence that's going to cover what you're proposing, then when you back out, that's going to be very hard to see from that side as well.
Well, it wouldn't go into.
Seventeen feet off.
It would be seventeen feet off the road, you'd have plenty of vision.
Well, you, then you would have the fence end halfway into the driveway?
Basically, well, it's going to be off the driveway, yeah, basically halfway.
How long is the whole driveway? Thirty-four feet, right?
It was.
You'd have seventeen feet.
The driveway's thirty-four feet long.
Yeah, you wouldn't have any problem backing out of your driveway. There's a fence.
I mean, you're going to have trouble backing out anyway, because the street's so narrow. That's another issue. But this is, you're, you're only going to have seventeen feet of fence.
If I'm. It sounds as if the applicant, again, I'm not going to put words into his mouth, he does not want the fence to end either seventeen feet into the driveway or ten feet into the, he'd like to have it end at, at the edge of the driveway.
Garage.
At the end of the garage. I understand, you would like to end it further down, so the difference is the seventeen feet, is what we're talking about here, right?
Oh, ten feet, actually.
No, it's seventeen.
No, seventeen.
It would be the additional seventeen feet from the edge of the garage to the right-of-way, is what we're talking about. That's kind of the discussion here. But you would be willing to do it to the edge of the garage?
Yes, I would.
Okay.
Can I ask you a question, though? The applicant's not going to live there.
No.
Right, he's not.
If this, if he was going to occupy the home, it might be different, but he's a builder.
But he's thinking about his buyers.
He's thinking about the buyers, what they would like, and how it would look.
Hundred percent.
I mean, I, it's an argument either way.
For what it's worth, there used to be a fence across the whole back of the property to the right-of-way.
Okay.
There's not an issue, really, for either one to back out, because it's seventeen feet.
No, I, I, I'm, I'm not worried about the vision part of it.
Mm-hmm.
It's not exactly a heavy-travel street, so, but I'm just saying aesthetically how it would look, whether it's to the end of the drive, garage or beyond.
Does the new.
No, I mean, last is perpetuated.
The garage, and then put an arborvitae around it. The fence has to be there forever. Between that.
Have to maintain a fence.
Give us something.
Yeah, that, okay.
If it's out and blocked. I don't see why you couldn't step down the fence, but if trees, if we can get.
Well, the plants might look nicer, you know, there would be a nicer look to them.
Well, depends if they're maintained right now.
Yeah.
The property's not maintained, so it looks crappy anyway, but, you know, so.
Going.
But again, and, and no offense to you, but you're not going to be living there. We are.
Yeah.
And I'm not taking anything away from you, but it's not your home. These are our homes.
Plants look nice, I mean, they're, they're a nice blockage.
Depends, on your opinion, white fence looks nice to them.
Yeah, all right, okay, well, the, the board will make a decision on that.
And then the question would be, what, if anything, what's going to require a fence, if they're requiring a certain type of fence?
I would say white vinyl.
Will it not be accepted?
It, white vinyl lasts longer, and doesn't get nasty-looking and gray, and, you know, it's low, low maintenance, you know? A, a wooden fence eventually rots and deteriorates and falls down, I've seen it, if you don't maintain it. So you put low maintenance on the, on the property owner.
Or something?
I mean, I'm just, that's just my opinion.
Are we putting, making that a requirement? I think not.
I don't know, I'm just, I'm just saying.
Come back to it.
All right.
Let's get everyone else on.
Now, can I ask a question of the board, or does that come later?
No, no.
Depends what the question is.
Okay, all right. Well, my, just my, my quick question. One might be for them. What is the square footage of the house now, and what is it proposed to be? Do you know that?
Right.
Just a quick question, but that's not my question to the board.
Did it go down?
What is the current square footage of the house, and what is the proposed? Thirteen-seventy-two, proposed eighteen-twelve, according to our planners. Okay, okay. Now, my other question to the board is, one, we're talking about the drainage, and again, we really don't know what the water's going to be coming out of the driveway, and how it's going to go down Pine Street, like Mr. Hollis was saying, that there is no pitch in the road, it's just too narrow to do that. So the water may come out, it may not, we don't know, and I understand that. But my other question is, what happens when a homeowner, you're giving out variances for all different things, what happens when the homeowner comes in and says, well, I want to expand the deck, or now I want to do something else? Do they get variances upon variances, and things like that?
That's up to that time, I mean.
Right.
Okay.
Any subsequent, okay, so let's say that the board approves this tonight.
Mm-hmm.
They would be, applicant would be getting a lot coverage variance in the amount of, they're proposing twenty-five point nine percent where twenty-five percent is allowed. Any subsequent homeowner that wants to expand on that deck?
Or change anything?
For example, deck, but whatever, right, parking, whatever.
Let's say they might make it a twenty by twenty instead of a twelve by twelve. Well, that's going to require, that's going to be an increase in lot coverage. Thus, they're going to have to come back to this board and they're going to have to get a new variance for that.
Just like we're doing here.
Okay, that's what I'm asking. And then, so the same thing would apply if they said wanted to cut out some of the front yard and say, we want to put in now a driveway in the front because there is no parking in the front.
They need a variance.
It depends. I haven't looked at the ordinance. It depends what they're proposing. If it violates the ordinance as it's written, they have to get a variance.
It, it does. It does because they're already over in maximum impervious coverage. So, hold on, sorry. Can I just finish? Sorry. So if they paved the driveway again, they'd have to come back to get a variance. They'd have to come before the board.
Okay, but then variances are issued on top of already existing variances.
But they'd have to make their case all again.
It may not be.
Oh, okay. So it would be the whole same thing again?
It would be the same exact thing.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And what I was referring to is any changes to the house. There's things you're permitted to do by right and things you're not permitted to do by right. When you're not permitted to do it by right, then you got to come here. Or the planning board, depends on the application. That's a lot to get into, but that's.
Okay, that was my question.
That's what I was trying to answer.
You want to, you can give that back. Okay, so hearing that. Can we start our deliberations or do you want anything else to say?
I don't need to sum up my sum up.
No.
Did we confirm that, just, just for the record, you're amenable to putting in a fence?
So.
The front of the house to the front of the garage.
We would like to leave that up to the board. Our preference would be to not have the fence at all or as to the back fence anyway, if it were going to be required, that it end with the front plane of the garage. We would not have a problem with then being required to have arborvitae or some kind of vegetative thing from that point to the right of way.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
So we're not stipulating. We'll leave that one up to the board.
Okay. All right.
Okay. Fred, speaking of stipulations, we might have touched on it at the last hearing, but are you guys stipulating everything in our board planner and engineer memos? There weren't too many conditions. I think a few changes.
Bill, Brian, we'd have no objections, right?
Okay.
We're fine.
All right. Thank you. So if you want me to, do you want to deliberate first? Do you want me to say?
No, let's deliberate first.
Okay.
Okay. Jessica.
How do you want to deal with the fence, just as part of our?
You tell us what you.
So.
We'll take a poll on that.
All right. So I'll start with the legal standards. I do think, first of all, thank you very much. I think that you really took to heart everything that not just this board said, but that the neighbors who were concerned and really raised very valid and excellent points at the last meeting. You took it back and I, I very much appreciate it because I think it made dealing with tonight much easier, right? Oh, yeah. Okay, bathtub upstairs, right. And, and, and you really have done the best that you can with this property. And so I think that for purposes of C one, we are there. I think that for purposes of C two, we are also there. The property as it stands is not functional. It's an eyesore. I think that you could have done anything and it would have improved it, but frankly, you know, it's, it's a vast improvement to what's there. There are safety issues that Mr. Johnson raised last time within the property. There's drainage issues which you are addressing to the best of your capability. And so for those reasons, I am in favor of the application, the way that it has been presented with the conditions that have been discussed. I am not in favor of the fence. I'm not going to, you know, I will defer to the majority, obviously, on the fence. I think that it's a careful what you wish for. I think it's going to be a little bit of an eyesore in terms of breaking up the property, adding more structure to that tiny space.
Would you, in place of a fence, would you be in favor of landscaping?
I think landscaping as opposed to a white vinyl fence is a much preferable aesthetically for the neighbors, for, you know, the neighborhood in general. I just, I think that it's going to look odd with a white vinyl fence in an L shape on that property, the way that it is and the sizes that it is. So I'm not making my vote conditional on a fence, but I am in favor of the application and I will be voting yes.
Well, again, thank you for coming and thank you for the people who, in the audience, who've come to hear us. The generator is going to be hid behind the fence. The garage is required. All the water abatement that you've, you've worked on taking it out to the water management system, that municipal water management system. But it's not going to be sitting in that property's backyard when you do sell it and the person who buys it goes, oh, I got a pond. So thank you for that. I like everything that you've done. Again, what Jessica said, yeah, I'd like to echo it. I also will not base my vote on the fact that you do or do not have a fence, but I would like to see some sort of line breakage there, some, some arborvitae or whatever foliage you want to put in there. That'd be fine. But I, based on everything that's been said and all of the stipulations that will be forthcoming, I would be in favor of this application.
Jerry.
I will thank the applicant for revising your application and your professionals. I think they did a good job listening to this board and to the neighbors. I don't think it's, I don't think the neighbors are thrilled with the project, but I think they're going to accept it because they know you've made some great efforts to appease their concerns. So thank you for that. Thank you to your professionals. The redesign, it makes it more palatable. With the fence, I am definitely in favor of the fence because they asked for it and it's a small thing. This board, we've seen it, we seem to do it. We did it with the shrine just recently. I know we're not a precedent-setting board, so it doesn't mean we can look back and say, well, we did it for that applicant, so we're going to do it here, but I think it's appropriate. I think it's a small ask for the size of the project that you're doing. And yeah, go with the vinyl. I mean, preferably, I would like to see wood. If it was my house, I would put a wood fence there, but I would maintain that. I know I would maintain that. And it's a, wood decks and wood fences are a lot of maintenance. Otherwise, they rot. So in this particular case, we can't see down the road. I'd be in favor of, as our chairman said, he's in favor of the vinyl. I think it's good for this application. I think it should start in the, in the north. It's, I think it's the north, the northwest side of the property. Go all the way to the property end and then head east as far as permitted by law and as high as permitted by law. And if this board wants to grant you a variance, if you want to ask for it for the height variance, so you can go right up to the property line. That's sort of, I've driven up there just to look at that for this application. That area, it needs, it's, it's in need of some type of maintenance anyway. There's like scrubby bushes and stuff there that need to, that needs to be cleaned up anyway. So I would assume that would happen with this project. I think that fence will just sort of define that area and then everybody can do their own landscaping. If you want to put arborvitae on your side, they want to put on their side, they can screen the fence, but the fence will be a sound barrier. So I'm pretty, you know, pretty strong on that, but thank you for everything else.
Tom.
Well, I listened to the last presentation on the, on the TV and I must admit, I empathize with the concerns expressed by the neighbors about the massive size of the house. And so I want to thank the applicant here for changing that design. Clearly, the neighbors are not concerned about the size because no one has offered any testimony to that point. So that's a good job on making those changes. Glad to see the neighbors are satisfied. And I think in terms of the C variance, I get me to all the criteria. As far as the fence, I for one, a little bit different than both. I would like to see the white fence extend from that corner to the edge of the garage and then from the edge of the garage to the property line, some sort of a arborvitae, some kind of a living bush of some sort. But again, I'm willing to change on that point. So again, I'm in favor of the application.
Jonathan.
Yeah, I mean, everything that has been said already, I think, you know, I would just reiterate and thank you again for taking into account the, the needs and desires of the neighbors and I appreciate them for coming out. I actually think that as a board, this is how we actually seem to work the best is when we listen to everybody, all sides, and come to a, some sort of, you know, the best, you know, when, when nobody's, I guess what they say is when nobody's totally happy, it's probably the best route. And so I think in this, we've made a pretty good, you know, we've had a good negotiation here and gotten something that, for all parties. I would agree with Tom, actually. I think I was thinking that same thing regarding the fence. I would say, you know, the fence to the edge of the garage line and then some sort of, you know, whether it be arborvitae or whatever. Again, that's just my own personal opinion. I think, I think, you know, I don't want to put any undue pressure, you know, I think that the applicant has said that he'd be willing to do this. He doesn't want to do it, I'm sure, but, you know, he'd be willing. And so if he is willing, then I would be in favor of a fence with then, then up to that point, what, similar to what Tom had explained. And I, and I again, thank you for your time and all your professionals and I would be supportive of this application.
Okay, so I'm trying to, I'm trying to break this down into different categories because everybody seems to have a little bit of a different perspective.
I have two no fence. I have two halves and I have one fence.
I didn't create it in a different category, so.
And unless I missed a note, we have two people who haven't spoken yet, right?
Well, one can.
One can. I haven't spoken yet.
Got it.
So the bulk, everyone with the exception of Ms. Brennan is in favor of a fence in some way, shape or form.
Except Tom.
Tom said that, okay, my fault.
It's three to two now.
Wait a minute. You wouldn't mind if it was there, but you're not against it?
That's sad.
Okay, so it's only really one?
Right. He was in, he was in my indifferent category.
Okay, indifferent, okay.
I'm not going to, I wouldn't block the application for the lack of it.
Oh, God.
Who's sitting on that? I was waiting for that joke.
Okay, I have, I have two people supporting landscaping instead of a fence and then two people supporting landscaping and fencing. With Tom and Jessica being landscaping instead of fence, even though Tom was indifferent to the fence. And landscaping plus fence, I think that was.
That was almost everybody. Joe, you, would you go along with landscaping and the fence?
We haven't talked yet.
Okay.
I just wanted to know what you were saying.
You're asking me to change my vote.
Yeah, that's really not changing. It's just modifying it a little bit.
Look, that's, I say we cross that bridge when we get to it, but right now, I think that, I think that the fence is the best option.
Right, I understand that, but we're, we're, there's a slight debate on whether it ends at the garage and then you go some landscaping or it goes as far as that can go at a step down lower rate because a four feet's not really going to do much. That's the whole point, but.
But what do you think? I mean, seriously, where are you on it?
I, I would say that I.
I want you to know what you, what you think.
I'm in favor of the application. I think the applicant has done all he can to satisfy the variances, to satisfy the C one, C two, C of, the requirements. He's been very flexible with his accommodations for what our experts were saying and what the audience, the neighbors were saying. I think the house will be a benefit to the neighborhood. It will, it will encourage a nice family to move in there. It'll be a useful house. Right now, it's really not useful for a family. It's kind of disjointed. It's got a strange garage in the front of the house and a strange driveway. Now it's going to be a little more normal. As far as the fence go, I, I think, before that was mentioned by the, by the public, I was not even thinking of a fence. But when it was mentioned, I don't have, I don't have an objection to the fence. I think I, I would want a fence there, but I would not want it to go past the front of the garage. I would want landscaping beyond that because I don't think four feet is going to do much for blocking anything. I think a plant base that grows higher would do better. It would, it would actually look nicer. It would be more aesthetic in the front of the garage up to the, up to the right of way. It would grow higher. I think it would be a better barrier than a four foot fence, which is all you could have basically there. So, and I don't want to create another variance. So I would be in favor of the fence, starting from the front of the corner of the house up to the back, across to the garage and then after that, a nice set of landscaping. I think that would, that would give some privacy to the backyard for that. People that own that house, unfortunately, you have two front lawns, so you really can't put the fence on the other side near Pine Street. I don't think you'd want to do that anyway, but, so I would, I would, I would be in favor of it with the fence. And then the landscaping by the garage.
Can I jump in?
Yeah.
So having said that, I think that's, that's the majority wants the fence to end at the garage and then landscaping thereafter. That's what it seems like to me.
That's my grasp.
Can you stipulate that the purpose of the arborvitae or whatever, can we stipulate the type of screening and that, that the intent of it is to screen but not to have one or two plants in that seventeen?
No, it would be, it would be a natural fence.
Yeah, so, so we're talking about arborvitae spaced, whatever it is that you space them.
That grow into each other.
Yes, grow into each other.
Right. Yes, it would be.
Not three, three bushes over the seventeen feet, seven feet apart or five feet apart.
It would be, it would be used as a natural fence.
Create a hedgerow.
Yeah, a hedgerow, right.
For buffering.
Yeah. Sound buffering, visual buffering, but a more aesthetic buffering.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. I, I hate to ask, vinyl fence or wood fence?
Well, I'd say vinyl.
I'll go vinyl too. I agree with you on that.
It's two for vinyl.
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 Three for vinyl.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, whatever, anyone else thinks, I don't.
So.
Come on, jump in.
I'm doing whatever they think.
Vinyl wins by default. That's, that's a majority. Okay.
Only because you can't guarantee somebody's going to maintain a wooden fence.
It's like a faux wooden fence.
All right. Okay, so now you have that as a condition.
Yeah, true.
Okay, so would you like to give you a little talk before?
Sure. I will do my best to summarize everything. I'm still trying to write out the condition for the fence. I think we all understand the terms, but just putting it into a, a single statement I'm still working on. But anyway, so here's the application before you, board members. Applicant here is seeking five variances, as I counted. Two are for the front yard setback for the proposed, well, I guess the existing to be renovated dwelling. They're required to provide a fifty foot setback at a minimum on, from the High Street yard, it's the South Yard. They're proposing forty-one feet there and they're also required to, I got them. Required to provide at least a thirty foot minimum setback from the, the Pine Street side to the east. They're proposing eight point seven. That's what I heard from the applicants earlier. Eight point seven, okay. No one's saying no, so that's what we're going to go with. Additionally, they're seeking a side yard setback for, on the west side of the dwelling. They're required to provide at least ten feet there and they're proposing seven point three. Additionally, they're seeking a front yard setback for the proposed garage. They're, this is going to be from the Pine Street side to the east. They're required to provide at least thirty feet there and they're proposing seventeen point one feet. And then finally, the last one is for lot coverage and with the stipulation to, that the proposed deck would comply with the ordinance's requirements for the fifty percent openness credit to apply. They're proposing a twenty-five point nine percent where twenty-five percent is the permitted maximum. They're also going to be complying with all the conditions in our board professional reports. The reports from Liz Laheny, our wonderful board planner, originally dated April eleventh, twenty twenty-four and revised through May first, twenty twenty-four. Then also our board engineer, Joe Voitsch's memo dated April fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. And there were a few other conditions I had included, but I think it might have already been covered in those memos. The generator and AC unit is to have a fencing around it and they've already represented that they're going to be doing that. Between garage. Okay, that's, that's kind of more towards the fence thing and there was another one.
Direct connection to the inlet?
Yeah.
Oh, direct connection to the.
The downspouts.
Right.
Of the garage in the house.
Let me just write this down before we keep going. The other one I had, any exterior lighting fixtures would be directed downward or otherwise shielded so as not to cast light spillage on neighboring properties. And then. Trying to be thorough here, folks, in one second. All right, the, as I stated before, the proposed deck will conform with section, I looked it up, it's one thirty-six point two G at Secuider to qualify for the fifty percent openness requirement, for the fifty percent openness credit. And the one I'm still trying to sort out in my head is the applicant will provide privacy fencing in compliant locations along the western property line, starting at the western, northern corner of the, of the dwelling to the rear corner of the, of the property, then eastward.
That's the southern.
Southwestern.
South.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's from the front corner.
Yeah, that's south. Up is north, the back of it is north.
That's what I thought. No, that's what I'm saying, from the.
From the front corner of the house.
From the front, oh, I'm sorry.
Southern corner.
Okay, I thought we were going from the back corner. Okay. So from the front southwest corner of the dwelling to the rearmost property line, the southern property line, then eastward to the face of the proposed garage.
That's the northern property line.
Yeah, northern property line.
Did I not say that? I said east along.
North is up and to the left on that map. North is the arrow.
Oh, I see. Okay. So the north, that'd be the northeast property line.
Right.
Right, okay. Along the northeast.
Northwest, that's northwest.
Starting in this?
No, the property line is northeast.
Right, that's what, yeah, it moves. Okay. Jesus Christ, I don't know, I'm confused. Okay, so we're, let me just get oriented with the map here. The top left corner is north, is north, correct?
Right, yes.
Okay, they're starting at the eastern, or I'm sorry, the westernmost corner of the house.
Right.
They're going along what would be the northwestern property line.
Right.
They're going to end at the corner. They're going to go along, east along the northeastern property line to the front of the garage with this proposed, not the proposed, but with this fence. And then from the face of the garage to the right of way line, they're going to be planting arborvitae trees.
To form a natural.
To form a natural barrier, screen fence, whatever you want to call it.
Arborvitae or the like.
Could instead of using directional suffix, because if you, it does get confusing.
I will word it.
On, of the properties?
I will word it in the best way I possibly can to make it.
You can say, you can say a long lot thirty-nine or whatever it is.
How many feet? Yeah, you can do that.
It's ten fifteen and I'm, I'm drunk. I'll figure it out, yeah.
We just request one clarification with regard to the fencing, not the fencing itself. Currently, there is natural vegetation along that sideline. So we're, we're not precluded from removing that in order to install the fence. I just don't want there to be any confusion.
No.
No, you're not.
We don't need both.
Right. If, if that gets in the way of the fence, that goes.
If it's on a property line.
If it's whose property?
It's on my property, it's not.
Well, we're not going to remove anything that's not on our property.
Anything on your property will get moved.
We're close to the public too, please. You don't have to get in the thick of it.
No, you're not allowed to move anything somewhere on someone's.
No, we understand that. But if it's on our side of the line and we'd like to remove it, to put the fence up, we're okay to do that.
Yes.
Okay.
And that's it, I hope.
That's it. I just asked for a sentence to that effect somewhere in the resolution.
Yes.
Thank you.
You got it, Fred.
Okay. All right. Roll call? Oh, I have motion. Do I have a motion to accept this, to move the, to approve this application?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call?
Vice Chairman Grosskopf.
Yes.
Mr. Rosenberg.
Yep.
Mr. Aronio.
Yes.
Ms. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Flatley?
Yes.
Chairman, correct?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you all very much. Thank you for staying with us.
Okay, and thank you for being so flexible on this.
Good luck.
I'll take, when it goes up for sale, I'll walk through it.
Do we have anything else?
Yes, we do.
Can we pick the color of the shutters? Can we pick the color of the shutters?
What are we doing?
Fred, we got fifteen minutes.
We got fifteen minutes.
Let me just talk about something.
Yeah, why don't you talk, Tom? I don't think it's worth starting.
We took a two minute.
Yeah, let's take a five minute break. Yeah, I know.
Are we going to hear the, the next application?
That's what he's determining. In fifteen minutes, we may not be.
Not if we're taking a five minute break.
We don't have professional memos either, so it's.
Yeah, we don't have professional memos.
I think we're done.
You really taking a break right now?
Yeah, yeah, shut it off. Yeah, yeah, shut it off. Okay, we're back on the record.
Not that mic.
Is it Deb already? I get, oh my God.
Can we get my batteries made in America? Rumor has it Chatham has a really nice system, and Deb might even have specs about that, from some attorney who knew about it. Anyway.
You should just get megaphones over there.
Yeah, right.
This way.
Go ahead.
All right, so obviously, given, given the hour and the fact that the next application is, is substantial and somewhat complicated, we're not going to try to start it for just a few minutes tonight.
Okay.
My understanding is that we can be carried to the twenty first. And there is a commercial deck application or something that will be on that night?
Uh, there are, there's a residential deck.
Residential deck, okay.
It's existing, overage and pervious coverage.
So obviously, our concern would be to be able to hopefully, hopefully finish, we're gonna have three witnesses at least. So we'll move to the twenty first.
Plus, you'll have the benefit of our experts' reports, which we don't have.
That's correct. We do have a, I do have a concern though, because we have a use variance. And I know, Mr. Chairman, you need to recuse yourself on this, and hold off anyone else's. So do we have alternates to bring us up to?
Oh, we have the other two members that aren't here. We have Gary and we have Meredith. So we will have two more members.
Where's the scenario, Fred? If you don't have a full seven vote, you can carry it to another meeting until we have a full seven vote.
Yeah, you could still put your case on.
Right, okay.
We'll give you leeway if you want to defer to a different meeting.
There was a, I don't know if it's a serious possibility or not, there was some possibility Mr. Gianakis could recuse himself if that happened.
There's a possibility that I might not get that meeting, the twenty first, May twenty first?
May twenty first.
Is it a strong possibility I won't be here?
Okay, now we're down to five members.
That's not good.
Yeah, that's not good.
I might have to go back and check the case law in the MLUL, but I know that there's certain instances where you can borrow, or maybe it's the other way around, planning board can borrow zoning board members. Does it work in reverse, Fred?
No, we can borrow planning board members.
Right, we can, right.
We have, yeah.
So we could explore that once we get confirmation on that.
I, I absolutely would want seven on this one.
Yeah, I don't blame you.
Who's the next available meeting? Is that, what happens if you get pushed out?
How are we looking on, how are we looking for the fourth? Would anything line up?
On the fourth depends if you want me.
Absolutely like to get you, no question about that.
Are you, Jerry, good on the fourth? Everyone else is good on the fourth?
Yeah.
Would you go for the fourth?
Maybe I speak with my clients for one second?
Sure, yeah. I mean, that might be a better option. Is he all by himself on the fourth, or is it someone else? No, nobody's all by themselves. Who, who else is on the?
A doggy daycare at, it's another use variance over at nine, at Valley Mall right here.
That might not be that long.
That would be second.
We're a carryover, would be.
Yeah, you'd be first, you'd be first, yeah, so.
They might have to be carried.
Yeah. I hope they bring in the dog and we get patted, what the hell.
My count is bribery.
Yeah, I know, yeah, Mike. You know, the dog and pony show, literally.
I think we have about four use variances coming up.
Oh, my God.
That's why I sent you my.
We're not allowed to have doggy daycare in this town?
Yeah, well, this year, I'm not going to be gone until the second week of July, so that's good.
I think boarding, is there boarding involved?
Yes. I, I would, I would highly suggest while they're discussing it, if the board members are aware of their, again, I, I, we put out the schedule that everybody agrees to at the beginning of the year. The board members know at this point in time, your summer schedules, and you will be missing a meeting. I can't express to you the importance of you letting me know ASAP because of this scenario that we're going through right now, and what it does to the applications, the applicants, the backup, and the time. So I beg you all.
So you're, you're putting them on what day? June?
I don't know, June fourth.
We're about to find out.
Now, that would be June second. What are you talking about? June fourth is a Thursday.
Oh, then June second.
It'd be June second.
Oh, shit. Hurry up, Fred.
Get him.
Yeah, you kept saying the fourth.
No, no, June fourth.
Fourth, six, four.
Fred, it is June fourth.
It's June.
I wasn't getting the date correct.
June fourth is a Tuesday.
Fred, come back.
It is?
You must be looking at July, or.
No, I'm looking at.
Yeah, you're must be.
Oh, okay, June fourth, you're right, June fourth.
It is June fourth.
It is June fourth, okay, sorry. Well.
June second would be Sunday.
Actually, it doesn't matter. I won't be here. That doesn't matter because.
I'm not gonna be here on July fourth.
That's the primary election, that's the primary elections, but I don't need to be here, so that's good.
Well, that's.
That's right.
I, yes, so that wouldn't make any difference, okay.
Ooh, okay.
That's a good one to recuse yourself from.
So June fourth, are we first?
You are first.
So you're good.
And there's no reason you would be stopping us midway, so if we can at least get the whole meeting, whether we manage to get done. And it sounds like we'll have a decent number of.
Yeah.
To my knowledge, yes, we have two members that are working the polls, so we're at seven. Unless anyone tells me otherwise, if we are.
I'm, I'm never a positive, I'm never a hundred percent sure of June, because I usually have work issues in June, so.
Appreciate that.
I cannot give you a hundred percent god positive.
We're down two, one for recusal purposes, but he's working the polls. And I know Mr. Flatley will not be here because he's working the polls. I will discuss with our attorneys about just pulling two from the planning board.
Check, check with Gary too.
Yeah, he might be recusing.
The potential conflict there is he's represented my client in the process of this project. I don't, I don't personally really see that as a conflict, but it could be viewed that way.
He did have a business relationship.
Yeah, he's not to gain from it now.
I'll brief.
Yeah.
Appearances.
Right, yes.
Yeah, it's appearances.
Yeah, it's exactly, it's the.
Fair enough, right.
Thank you. Thank you.
So eighteen ninety three will be June fourth, and then uncommon thread will be back to the twenty first, I guess, okay.
Right, okay.
Okay, do I hear a motion to move?
So recusing, so no, you gotta ask?
What, what did we gotta say?
Motion, you need to request a motion to carry the application.
Oh, yeah, yeah, you do, okay. You, you have to.
You're taking over the reins just for that.
Oh, okay, I move to carry the.
No, no, you have to request a motion.
Well, can someone please give me a motion? Thank you very much. I've never had a, I've never had a better motion in my life.
The motion is to carry the application to June fourth, just so everybody's.
With no further notice required.
With no further notice being required, it was correct the first time around, it was good for today. It's carried in multiple times, it's good to go.
We have a first.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There we go.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Have a great night, see you in two weeks.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, all in favor, we're adjourned.